Getting ready to call this meeting order if, uh... Got approval with you do some prayer and, uh... If you could, uh... Talk to them, Cortez, if you did the pledge. Okay. Do it all with your eyes, please. So, excuse me, we have to call over.
I can do it alongside.
Counselor Arnold?
Present.
Counselor Moore?
Present.
Counselor Corn?
Here.
Counselor Orbesa?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Here.
Counselor Cabin?
Here.
Counselor Maruko?
Here.
Counselor Cortez?
Present.
Counselor Halverson?
Yeah.
Thank you. Father God, I just came before you, give you all glory and honor, thank you for the beautiful day you gave to us, Father God. Ask of us all whether to hear, Father God, all the counselors, give us wisdom as we make our choices tonight. Ask you protection over our military, Father God, ask protection over our first responders. We're thanking you, give you all glory and honor, your name is great, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Okay. Now we have, uh... It's gonna be a little different. For those of you who have your agenda out here, uh... The one that was given out at the front door was, uh... Item twenty-one is now gonna be moved to number three. I know, I'm just so they can get their paper, so they know when they want. And then item forty-five is now item number fifty-two. Forty-five is now fifty-two. On your agenda, uh... And, uh... And that's... Okay, and that's in the public hearing section, okay? So that's, okay, now, and now I'll have, uh... And that's just so you... That's on this document that was given to everybody with the name of the door. And so she was gonna go through and read the technical corrections that we have, uh... In the councilway house, and if you would, uh... Move for approval of agenda as amended, as amended.
Ms. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda for the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five inner city council meeting with the following changes. Item number three should read pursuant to chapter two of the city code. Mayor Jennings nominates and requests confirmation by city council Judy Sharmer to serve as the city's internal auditor.
Motion by...
Second item is pull item number twenty-one from the consent agenda and place it before number three. Before, make it two A. So it's seven, it's two A now. Twenty-one is two A. Pull the following items from the consent agenda. Number nine, P O Desert West, one million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, seventy-one ninety-one dollars, and that exists will now become item number forty-five. Number eleven, P O Desert West, five hundred ninety-one thousand, thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents will now become item number forty-six. Number twenty-six, resolution twenty-five forty-two, certification of correctness of physical inventory will now become item number forty-seven. Number thirty-six, the Roswell Hispanic Chamber, the Yada Press, larger tax timing request now becomes item number forty-eight. Item number thirty-seven, the minutes from the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five special city council meeting now becomes item number forty-nine. Number thirty-nine, the minutes, July tenth, twenty twenty-five, now becomes item number fifty. Number forty, minutes, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, now becomes item number fifty-one.
Sir. So we have a motion by Council Lady Halverson to approve the, uh... Agenda as amended. We have a second, sir. Second by Counselor Hildebrand. Any further discussion? Counselor, uh... Orbesa?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Item number twenty-one and item number three. Are they two separate? Is it, or are we gonna discuss number three? Or is it just the, uh... The nomination for a position? Because if we're gonna discuss it at number twenty-three, there's no reason to pull number twenty-one off of it.
Mr. Mayor, I could clarify. There are two things for consideration. One is the contract for professional services to provide internal audit services. The other is the nomination, uh... Which is required under chapter two by the mayor, uh... For the appointment in this council's consideration of the internal auditor of the city.
So my question would be, the nomination, uh... It seems like it's an individual, but it's... The individual owns a business.
Sole proprietor of that business, yes, sir.
So we're nominating the business, or we're nominating the individual?
Both, in this sense. So the, she is the sole proprietor of that business and will be acting as the city's internal auditor.
Okay. It'll continue, okay? Thank you.
So we were gonna move twenty-one to two A. Two A.
Two A.
So it would be just in front of, or three A is... It would be just in front of three. Or, well, so it's in front of three, so...
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to discuss the, um... Since the item was pulled, we need to discuss the, um... The professional services contract, and then that's why we got item twenty-one, and then item three is the appointment. The recommendation of the consultant.
Yeah, for the change of twenty-one.
So three. So twenty-one should be two A?
Yes, sir. And then number three.
Number? Two, we started two. So we'll be okay?
So does, on the public hearing, does it become fifty-two, fifty-three, or fifty-four?
Yes.
Can you take it out?
They will all need renumbering. Okay, we have a motion, seeing no further comment. We have a motion by Counselor Halverson, second by Counselor Hildebrand, to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any you wanna roll call?
Yes, sir.
Call it, Kirk, call or roll?
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Orbesa?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Maruko?
Yes.
Counselor Cortez?
Aye.
Counselor Halv- uh, Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended for the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five inner city council meeting.
Second. We have a motion to approve the consent as amended by Counsel Halv- Counsel Lady Halverson, summoned by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further, any discussion? Seeing no questions, we have a motion by, uh... Counselor Halverson with a second by Counselor Johnson to move the approval of the consent agenda. I'll move it, or if Kirk will roll.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Orbesa?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Maruko?
Yes.
Counselor Cortez?
Aye.
Counselor Halv-
Yes.
Okay, so...
Motion passes ten to zero.
Motion passes ten to zero. Okay, next we have item two A, which is, uh... Item, uh... Twenty-one on your agenda, it's... Item twenty-one is now item... This is two A, so... It goes in two firsts.
We did two.
You just did consent, you just... Oh, okay. Excuse me, I was asleep. Yeah. So now we're doing item twenty-one, approval to enter into a professional services contract with True Business Solutions to provide internal audit services for the city of Roswell. Counsel, uh... Counselor Corn?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for moving, uh... The item two A, which is approval of dinner professional services contract with True Business Solutions for internal auditor services for the city of Roswell.
We have a motion by Counselor Corn and a second by Counsel Lady Halverson. So we have a motion by Counselor Corn, second by Counselor Halverson. Nancy? Mr. Chad?
Sir.
Cole, would you like to explain item, uh... Twenty-one, or two A?
Yes, sir.
Used to be twenty-one.
Yes, sir, and I'll, I'll say that, uh... We have, uh, Ms. Judy Sharmer here, uh, with us tonight as well. So this item is a, uh... Professional services contract agreement, uh, for fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, for annual internal audit services. As you know, uh, that's one of the things that our city's been lacking for quite some time, are the internal, uh, audit component. Uh, we've had those positions open, uh, but have had a real struggle in finding qualified candidate to fill that role as an internal auditor. Uh, Ms. Sharmer brings a lot of experience to the table. Uh, she's a certified public accountant, uh, and she's here with us tonight. If we can answer any questions about the contract.
Okay. Ms. Sharmer, welcome.
Thank you.
Red along history, I think, at the institute. That's good. Uh, if you could give us, you've probably read our audit and, uh... Seen the audits that we've had and have gone all certainly in front of you one, but, uh... I look a great deal forward to working, having an internal auditor to, to keep us, our audits straight and clean. So, uh, it's gonna be a big task, but appreciate you all taking the task. If you'd like to invest in Council, then...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counselors. It's a pleasure to stand here today, uh... As hopefully it'll be the vote of your, your internal auditor. Um, I have many, many years of experience. Seven years as a public accountant auditor, seven years of an internal auditor at the New Mexico Military Institute, and fifteen years as their CFO. And, uh, so I, I bring to the table many years of experience, not only as the CFO, but as, uh... Specifically in auditing. And, um, I have read your special audit and, um, ready to, to attack all of those particular findings. And, and if you vote for me, uh, to, tonight, then one of your first findings can be eliminated. Number twenty-three dash ten, I'm hiring an internal auditor. So, so number one, so that finding would be reduced. And I'd be glad to, to stand for any questions.
Do you have any questions, Counselor Orbesa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, one of the reasons that I pulled number twenty-one off of the consent was because I have an individual colleague and, uh, was questioning the, the position. And so in order to, to have him give some kind of input, if he wants to give input, then we could go ahead and do that. But I, I find it kinda disturbing, I guess, that we're hiring a, uh... Not an individual, but we're hiring a company. And, and then, uh... Mr. Mayor, I don't know, I, I know this is your appointment, uh... But did you interview anybody else? Other than this individual?
No, sir, I'm not, I'm not sure she has, uh... I didn't interview anyone else, the, uh... That, her re- her reputation at the Military Institute and stuff is extremely... And she has a great reputation there, I did not interview her. I thought it was, uh... It was great. She left the institute, I think this was a, uh, kind of a downside position for her, so she has more time now to do maybe not quite as much work as the institute was. And so it looked to me like we'd have a lot, but, uh, she'd have a lot more time, and she had a stellar record.
No, and, and I'm not questioning her reputation, her credentials, or anything like that. I, what I am questioning is, was anybody else given the opportunity to, to apply for the position? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sure she's well qualified, I'm, I don't, I don't know her, and, and I don't mean any disrespect to you. But in fairness, did everybody have an opportunity to apply? You know, if, if the, the position had been open?
Yes.
Advertised.
Yes, sir, the, the position was open. Uh, one of the criteria is we would prefer, uh, a certified public accountant, someone who owns that professional credential. Um, it's not, uh, out of the ordinary to contract, particularly for external audit services with companies. And so, uh... After, like, more than a year of having the position posted, uh, and not having qualified applicants for the position, Ms. Sharmer did, uh, reach out after our, um... Public meeting, uh, to review and discuss the special audit and, uh, offered her services. Uh, we did take this to finance committee, uh, for review and consideration there. And the service, uh, sent to consent, consent agenda by finance.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, sure, I think, Miss...
Can you, can you say your name again?
Sure.
Sharmer? I, I just wanted to say, right? I, I wanna, first of all, thank you for, uh... I mean, pursuing this position, I don't think, uh... I don't think any of us that are asking questions here are gonna be, um... And, you know, we know your reputation. Obviously, I'm biased to all things New Mexico Military Institute. And, uh, so we know you have great reputation, but we have some anomalies, I think, that we wanna just kinda discuss, that I wanna ask questions. These questions are probably not for you, the one lady, questions are more for staff, and if, uh... How long, we have legal here tonight? Do we have any legal here tonight? Sorry? I, I don't think legal is in the house tonight. No, no legal tonight, okay. Um, I'm interested in, um, I guess a couple things, so we're on twenty-one. So are we approving a contract, or are we doing the, uh, appointment? At this point, I think, two, item two A was the contract. Okay. Yes, sir. Love a couple discussions about, questions about the thing. So True Business Solutions LLC, is that a, uh... Are you a sole member of that?
I am, uh, a, an LLC, and I'm in partnership with, with my husband, Willis, who is also in this room.
Okay. So not a sole proprietorship?
Correct. It is an LLC.
So I, and I saw that our deputy counsel came in, so I'm looking here at, uh... Is the internal auditing position the one that's advertised on your job number twenty-one oh seven five job? Pardon? Twenty-one oh seven five, the internal auditing position? What's the question? Is that the job that we're trying to fill, the twenty-one oh seven five? Or we're trying to fill with? A contractor. A contractor. Professional services. Which, that is, that position is a regular full-time position? Normally it would be, yes. Right. So this is an external person filling an internal position? It's an internal audit function, but yes, an external company filling, uh, what would typically be an employee of the city.
Okay, so my next question here, and I, and I wasn't here for the amending of chapter two, but I think we're rooted in chapter two, which I printed out, which was section two dash fifty-three, creation of offices appointed officers. Where that item D says the appointed officer of the city shall be manager, clerk, treasurer, finance officer, chief of police, auditor, attorney, city attorney, city auditor, not necessarily city internal auditor, so there's some language differences. And item D says the governing body has discretion made in lieu of having an in-house office of the city attorney contracted an outside individual or law firm for legal services. And I'm curious, and I'm glad counsel's here, deputy counsel's here, the ordinance doesn't say that we can contract any of the other appointed officials, it's expressly just lawyers, legal services, into place of city attorney.
I, I don't think it excludes that possibility.
Is it affirmative or is it excluding?
I, I, I don't think it excludes the possibility of contracting.
Then why is it stated for a city attorney? And that's my question for legal, is are we by, like, it doesn't say item D, the governing body, the governing body may include having an in-house office of the city attorney, or city auditor, or city clerk, or, you see what I mean?
Sure.
So I'm concerned, my concern's not with Ms. Sharma, my concern is with, are we violating section two dash fifty-three of our ordinance?
Well, I will tell you this, um, we had mentioned this to the state auditor's office when they, um, came to discuss in executive session our special audit. Um, and one of the items that we talked about was the difficulty in finding a qualified internal auditor. Uh, and, uh, threw out to him specifically and his deputy, uh, the possibility of using a professional services provider for that role, um, and they were supportive of that.
Right, and I, I have the special audit right here, the fighting, and it does say that recommends the counsel and the audit committee, which, just for the record, we don't have an audit committee either. Okay, and hire or contract. So it says we can hire or contract with an internal auditor. So I, I think you're consistent with the special audit findings, other than we don't have an audit committee. So I go back to the question, and I wish to ask Mr. Entebo, who's the, the counsel here, if we approve this, are we violating section two fifty-three of our code, which doesn't state that we can, in lieu of having in-house office of the city attorney, or city auditor, can we contract that outside?
And I will say this, um, any contract that comes before the city is reviewed by Mr. Itema or the, the legal office. Um, he has reviewed this contract, he and I both discussed, uh, this contract long before it was brought, um, as a possibility, and, uh, his opinion to me was that this was perfectly legal.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to get a couple more questions here. So I look at, uh, the contracts, since we're in contract, and the services to be performed, there's a list of services to be performed, and I would just note that when I compare that to the internal auditor position that we have posted, it doesn't seem like what we have posted matches what we have in this contract for the internal auditor position.
And what, what?
That's not the same.
Okay.
So we have a full-time employee internal with a set of job responsibilities, and I don't see that those job responsibilities are perfectly translated over to professional services contract. So I'm just curious about that. Last thing I, I have a question about is, and I'm sorry, Sharma, really not, it's really, this is really not about you, this is about the procedure that we're following, process matter. So I look at two ninety-one, which I know that several of our colleagues sitting up here today, and, and I know that we don't have treasurer's or a treasurer's office. Then I go to two ninety-one, it says auditor, and it says in our code, the office of treasurer shall have an auditor. The auditor shall be nominated by the mayor for approval by the governing body, which sounds like what item three is gonna roll into. If approved, the auditor will be employed through the treasurer's office.
And report to the treasurer.
And the auditor will report directly to the governing body and the treasurer. When I look at this contract, it says generally this will lead up to the treasurer, which of course we don't have. I wish you maybe want to be a treasurer, uh, but the absence of a treasurer will be done through the city manager. So this contract to me, and I'm not a lawyer, it's just inconsistent with our own code, and that's what gives me some consternation. And that's why I wanted to ask you about it. I do wish counsel's here, because we went to finance, but we didn't go to legal. And I don't know five governing members of our board nominating, you know, because you go through the two committees, you gotta go, either the mayor, the item on, if you read the request, maybe the mayor did, which I'm assuming he did, or five or less have to, but I don't think five of us did. And so we go to one committee, not to legal, which is okay, but I don't know how that went. But this, this, this agreement, to me on its face, is not consistent with our existing rule. And while I certainly think Ms. Sharma is qualified, and I appreciate her volunteering and taking this position, because it is hard to fill these types of positions, I'm gonna have a hard time reconciling us approving a contract that violates our code. Unless I can be told that I'm wrong on that side, which is fine, I'm perfectly willing to be wrong, so.
Well, that's what I can tell you, uh, councilors, that, uh, Mr. Itema did review the contract, actually made revisions to the contract, um, to make it consistent with the law.
But it doesn't count as basically, is my point, so I yield my time, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselor, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you for stepping up, we really appreciate that. Again, my comments are of course directed more to the process. I completely, uh, concur and noted the same items, uh, that stood out as what I want to call inconsistencies and a little bit of circumvention, um, to try to meet requirements. Um, but one of the things that throws me at this point, considering that Councilman Oropeza and Councilman Cortez have already brought forth a lot of my concern, is what was approved through finance as far as the statements and agenda change, number three to read something completely different, um, that's where, um, I get confused with the inconsistencies, and I actually find hiring a consultant, um, is a rare form. I haven't ever seen it, we normally hire an individual, um, so that stands out to me. But also, when you look at, um, two A, and I'm a little bit confused because the law is falling around, but when you look at two A or twenty-one, what was approved in finance, says that we are putting True Blue, but then, and that is for the role of the internal auditor, but then you actually changed, um, the read to, and it doesn't mention anything about True Blue. It doesn't actually say that we are hiring True Blue, it says we're hiring each one. And I think the point I'm trying to make is the repetitive inconsistencies that go from throughout this whole process, um, and I, I think it's a first time, considering that we're trying to be contracted, things give a little bit of confusion, but it all smells a little strange to me. It smells a little off and it makes me uncomfortable, and I, um, I felt that in the finance meeting. I really wanted more explanation on when I've understood where we're at, and, um, I'm working to, to get an internal auditor place, which I know the mayor has been diligent at trying to figure out how to get this accomplished, but it still is a little, it stands out as, um, as a little off. And I, at this point, I, I do not support, I won't put my name on it, but I do, of course, wanna say that I, I really appreciate this, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Is there a rush on this that we didn't, that the, the way that we can, so we look at, you know, this is not matching? Is there a rush to do this tonight, that they cannot go back to legal, let them make a match on what our code says? Is there, is there a problem with that?
You know, I, I think there's always a way to do it, but I think in today's times of, on hiring, when you look at hiring an individual, uh, when you, when you incorporate yourself into a company and so on, like they got into True Blue, I would assume that that gives them a lot of legal protections and protects their personal assets than whether or not if they were an individual person. And so I think that's why most people incorporate themselves into a, into a company, so you don't put your, every bit of your home assets, cards, everything you have when you apply as an individual, uh, you might have that now.
I understand that, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm saying the inconsistencies, how can they be fixed? Do we have to do the disnomination tonight, or three of us have, or we now have discussed inconsistencies with the contract? Is there a way to fix that? We're not trying, again, it's not personal, this is about the process, and, and I, I struggle with it, because when it's convenient and we don't worry about the process, when somebody wants something, then they'll, you just skip to the other things and, and, and let you make the nomination, and, and that's normally how it is, but I think if we're gonna do this and we don't want to get any deans, let's do this right. Make the contract, make sure it matches what is, what our code says, do the wording right. If we need to take out True Blue or add her name next to True Blue or, or whatever, I understand it on corporation, one hundred percent. So that's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying, I just think we need to step back on this and allow it to go to legal, where they match our code, so nobody else can come back and say, the mayor chose her, she's somebody's friend, she's Ms. Howerson's cousin, need friend, whatever, she's Miss, you know, Miss Howerson, you know, anything. So we don't want any of those things to look for anybody any reason to come and pull off the cloak and find something that's, that, that, that we're trying to do something underhanded. That's, that's my, that's my take on it. So I think if we just take a bit, a step back, and I don't know if we can, I don't know where we stand, that we can take a step back and not vote, either not vote on this or we're gonna vote this down, so that it can go back to legal and it can be addressed correctly. And that's my, that's my, my interpretation of what's going on today.
Counselor, Councilman Haldenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, agree with some of this. Uh, we'll put this on the legal committee agenda, which will meet next week, and have it back before this council to change chapter two to line up with hiring a outside service, whether it be a corporation, individual, or whatever, we can line that up so that we're, we're, uh, in accordance with chapter two. I think when we went around with chapter two, we never had this concept of having the difficulty of hiring an internal auditor. And I agree with the mayor, oh, heartily, the people will now put themselves in an LLC for protection of their assets, there's nothing wrong with that. In fact, it's a smart business decision to do, so if this council's so inclined, we can move back to legal, and I know our counselor is not here, but Josh, I'm gonna ask you, that if we so inclined, that this gets put on the legal committee agenda for the meeting next Thursday. So, I might not make a motion, but I will entertain that we will, we will move rapidly to get this done, to make sure that chapter two lines up with what our actions are. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'll flip for a second now. Is there anyone else for a first time? For a second time?
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Okay.
Then move to legal.
You have to table, you send it to, you don't wanna send it to, uh, legal committee, which you, you don't wanna table.
Right. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to send to legal.
Second. So we have a substitute motion to, to send this, to refer this item back to the legal committee.
As well as item five?
Yes, two, item.
Item.
At the next two.
Item.
Item three is the appointment, item two A is the contract.
We need to do their responsibility.
So I, we just, we'll, we'll vote on item three. You have to poll item three, especially if you want to do it correctly. Because you can't send item three back to legal, because it has nothing to do with legal. So you did it, but after.
Can I make a motion to table, I'm gonna, another?
You're gonna go one.
Yeah, one motion at a time.
One motion at a time.
Yes.
So it's two A, the, the second.
And then after that, you would have to work on item three. So, and my, my only concern is I think that we definitely, after the last one, we definitely need to get high and behind on reading and getting, uh, internal auditor, and I think that's what we tried to do, and trying to hire was difficult, and, uh, so, uh, we'd have to do what we might, and if we have time, we could have a, a special meeting, get her going and working as soon as we can. After your legal meeting, uh, we might have to have a special meeting or something, but I, I, I don't, and I don't, I, I just want us to get our books clean, and, uh, and you know, I, I don't think there's, uh, our code, if you look at our city code, it's been a probably a long time since it's been done, since it's been written, and so times have changed, and terms have changed, and, uh, and it's just like when you talk about this, attorneys, uh, an attorney contracts with other attorneys in, in any of your lawsuits the city gets into, just because of the attorney's specialty, because of the different areas of law that they go through, so they constantly, an attorney will hire another attorney, because if you're, you'll hire somebody who knows about a specific section of law, and so that's why the attorneys, uh, contract with each other, because each section of law is very, is, can be very intense, and, so, that's where we go.
Counselor, I, I appreciate all that. This ordinance was updated in twenty twenty-four.
Well, I know.
And if we hire outside counsel, that's external, not internal. So we're talking about internal, I think we have, we're on the right track here. Appreciate Mr. Haldenbrand's comments, I appreciate that, and I appreciate, I'll be there for a special counsel, no problem. I, I think we've gotta get this code, dial this in, do it right. We're to hire an auditor and not have it match our code.
We'd have an audit finding.
Yeah, that would be an audit finding.
Now we're back to having another audit finding, we just got rid of one, now we're getting it back.
Well, I think, yeah, so anyway, I think, I think we're gonna have to go with some of these services. Obviously, we'd love to have you in-house, you know, we'd love to have you as a treasurer, if you know some friends, but, uh, I think we're just gonna dial this in here, and we'll be ready to go.
Next Thursday.
Well, somebody just that was on, speak, public participation there.
Someone else to speak?
No, public participation, it wasn't, somebody, I just remember, he went on, went to go rings, so.
Oh, Julius was here on item, to speak on item twenty-one or two A. So we're gonna move it back to the table, and if he would like to say something, now he can, or we can, so, he can, he can go to.
Speak at legal.
Okay, so, we'll talk about that if I didn't catch that. Okay, so, we have a motion to refer this bill, uh, this item twenty-one back to, uh, to, uh, legal committee. If you want, you wanna call a roll, or?
Counsel Arnold was the first and made the motion, Counsel Moore was the second.
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Oropeza?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Cavan?
Yes.
Counselor Marongo?
Yes.
Counselor Cortez?
Aye.
Counselor Halderson?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're gonna.
We'll get it done next Thursday. We'll get it done next Thursday.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment please? I have to tell you, I really appreciate the attention to detail because I would feel almost hypocritical, obviously, if, if we didn't do it the right way. So I am fully supportive, I do not take any offense to that, and I have spent a lifetime of, of working with, with wide reputation and I have no issues whatsoever and I absolutely appreciate that attention to detail because if I were on that side of the table, I'd be doing the exact same thing, the exact same thing. So no harm, no foul, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. So now for a proper motion for item three, we would move back to, just refer it to the next council meeting? Make that motion? Pardon? Well, we wanna table it or refer it back to where it comes back?
Refer it back to, the contract portion is the, to legal, refer back to legal, the nomination will follow the, the contract.
Okay. So we need a motion to refer item three back to the legal committee?
Item three.
Item three.
Two A.
No, we already did two A, this one's three.
I had already made that motion.
Okay, so Counselor Moore has made a motion to revert item three back to the special committee, to the legal committee, to the special, special meeting, legal committee. And seconded by Counselor Lady Howerson.
I have some question whether it belongs back to the legal committee.
No, I said, I said the special committee meeting following legal. Because that's what we said, it was gonna be a legal meeting and then there's gonna be a special.
Special meeting, follow.
Special meeting following legal or the next meeting.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, excuse me. So we refer it to the next special meeting?
Special meeting following legal.
And that, does everybody understand that? That Counselor Moore's motion was to refer this back to the next special meeting after the.
The legal committee, the department, the plate. Had discussion of this motion?
Yes, it would be okay to have.
Okay.
Because we're moving it, we're not table.
Pardon? You're moving it to the next, the next meeting?
Not special.
To special committee.
What if legal really messes this thing up? It's a possibility. And then you don't have it. So I would rather just keep both of them together instead of both to legal. Although this won't be a big discussion item because all the way it's worded in this agenda, it could be because it's not worded properly, in my opinion. Just move both to legal and we'll hear it next week. Chairman already said he would, so. And are you, well, I'm waiting for, if I was kind of holding it, it's legal.
I don't, like, I'm, it's, it's a, I don't feel like that one belongs to legal because that's your recommendation. It's not, it's not a legal offense that we, that legal, we just weigh in on. So I felt, they had already said, let's have a special meeting after legal worked through this and so if we're not gonna have a special meeting, then I'll move that we may do that at the next council meeting. We can't be, it can't be either gonna be at the special meeting or it's gonna be at the next council meeting, one of the two.
It's you, it's either or, but if you read the agenda item, it says approval to enter a professional services contract to visit True Business Solutions, Judy Sharmer, to provide internal audit services for the city of Roswell.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, Mr. Counselor.
Oh, you, I'm, I should go ahead. Oh, you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, it just seems to me that there are two things at play here and it kinda got jumbled there, but it seems like once we discuss this, we, and we decided that we could, the city auditor position, we could be contracted, that then you would nominate, which is your right, and then we would ratify and then they would be together at that point. Or, like, the items are redundant, where you would nominate, we ratify, and then we would approve the contract.
Go ahead.
Like, you'd put, you have to have a nomination first before you approve the contract or the service.
Well, so this, 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 this says enter into professional services contract, so wording on your agenda is in progress.
It seems like we have to have a nomination item, so I think what you're saying, Counselor Moore.
I'm, I'm just saying that whatever you guys, what we wanna do collectively, the way we felt about this is pretty shocking.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ellerbrandt?
Mr. Mayor, if you look back and read what the approval, the agenda was, it says item three pursuant to the chapter two, Mayor Jennings' nomination request. So that's what you're talking about, no matter what it says. You've already approved on the agenda to talk about his nomination. It's, it's mis-titled on here, but you come back and said, you amended this thing to Mayor Jennings' nomination. So it's not about a service contract, that's, that's Mayor Jennings' nomination. Yes.
Counselor Moore, press it, let's, better than.
Beat this thing to more.
Mr. Mayor, in my opinion, I think the solution is very simple, and that is for you to pull your nomination until we meet again. I mean, you can always re-nominate an individual.
Well, if you would, God, so, Mr. Sharmer, if I was to not nominate you and then after we have the other meeting, I can nominate you and then we'll, then we can have our special meeting. Item is that, Adam Clark, is that, is there a certain amount of notice that has to be given after I nominate before we vote?
We have the 72 hour.
So it'll be a thirty. Now, I just have to tell you, I would be out of town all next week, but I can probably nominate from Taiwan or somewhere. Okay.
You don't have to be a person to nominate, does it?
No.
The nomination is right. I mean, it's always been right. So before you leave, I guess we could write it down?
I guess I could do it on the internet. I could nominate on the internet.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yes.
Josh. Counselor? If we, it sounds like we're gonna be discussing amendment to the code, potentially if that's required to have, that we could contract the auditor position. And if we were to decide to do that, the question is, is then, do we have to have, or how do we, to amend the code, we have to help you to that code?
Yes, anytime you imagine, like, ordinance, you would have to do, you know, 30-day public hearing, that you heard, so following city council meeting to vote on those amendments to pop it down.
30-day, or give you a special meeting.
I think you have to have 30 days public hearing regardless.
Okay.
So that typically puts you out roughly two months. Question, I think, perhaps everybody's getting at is, does Chapter 2 really need to be amended?
Right.
To accomplish what they're trying to accomplish?
That's the question.
If the mayor wishes to withdraw his appointment, he can certainly just come back and re-appoint.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, sir.
Mayor, if the mayor wishes to withdraw his appointment, he can come back and, you know, after legal, after there's some more information, after the counselors are satisfied that things are done in a way that, you know, makes everybody feel good about the process, then, you know, the mayor can certainly just choose the person for this appointed auditor position, provided those discussions at legal are, you know, substantial and be able to communicate what everybody's asking about.
How can we, can we do that, figure it out for legal meeting on Thursday?
Yes, and then you would have to hold another special council meeting right after that to have, to process to have a special vote. It's gonna be 30 days.
We have next week, council meeting.
You gotta have a special, you gotta have a special meeting after our city council meeting, it's 30 days.
The later meeting is in two weeks.
No, it's, it's gonna be Thursday.
He said we're changing it to the next Thursday.
I mean, if we listen?
Yeah.
No, it's gonna be changed to this coming Thursday.
Are you changing, you're gonna change it from the Tuesday?
Yes, the top two, the city attorney, and he was supposed to modify it. Of the change.
We have not identified the change.
It will be, it's, 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 it's.
We've heard our actual, three hits of code from 24, they haven't. It's not, you're talking. Okay, so, so where are we? So in any event, then we will have to have a public, the legal committee, then we have to advertise it for 30 days?
Yes, to change the ordinance.
If you change the ordinance, which you have to change the order. We don't have.
I believe that's the case.
Okay, so if you believe it, well, okay, well, we can't decide anything until. Till after the legal, legal committee and how it responds if it acts. If they change the ordinance, then we will have to act, we will have to have a 30-day hearing, right?
Yes.
So, so everybody understands that, so. If there's any questions about what we're doing when we do this, I'm sorry, Mr. Sharmer, it might be a little bit longer, so.
Don't go anywhere.
Yes, I'll have to, I will have to renominate, I'll have to pull my nomination, I'll have to renominate, Mr. Sharmer, after the legal committee actions. And I think we'll have to say it's, it could be a corporation or a person or whatever.
They're trying to decide, you pull the nomination or do you take it to legal? When you're having legal, the 21st, next week?
I think our, she was talking about a legal meeting.
The 4th Thursday is the 28th. Legal is the 28th.
Pardon?
Legal is on the 28th.
No, you're willing to change it. He knows that. Several conversations about that.
He said we can have it tomorrow, we can have it on the 21st.
Yes.
And we can either.
That's, that's when we're gonna have it.
And we can either cancel the nomination or we can move it to legal. We already know. But we have special, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So now then we'll have, I will have to rescind this and I will put in the known in, in the middle after the 21st. Does that sound like that's the proper order then?
Yes.
Okay, so now we will go to. Let's see, we have an extender, we can stand here for a little bit. Which other ones didn't we pull on here? Nine, 11? So then we go to item number. Okay. Okay, we have to go to item 41 because they, nine, 11 have been renumbered. So we go to item, oh. Item 41, let's see. We have an addendum, pardon? Are we all aligned? We're on item 40, airport updates. Did we pass everything up to 40? All right. I know we did 40, and 40 went from 51 to 51. Okay, so we go to, Ms. Ms. Bobby, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Counselors, good to be in front of you again. So for multiple airport updates, things have been just a tad busy out there. But first of all, if I can draw a statement from, maybe someone here has seen, what is it, Verba. In this case, Verba means FEMA. FEMA again has moved on to the airport, they're in the airport buildings, their contract that they've ordered, so they'll be there minimum of three months, possibly as long as one year. They're working a lot on the things that happened at Redosa and hopefully the things that happened in the city of Roswell, they'll finally get some of those things done. But this time, they actually brought considerably more individuals, they're looking at somewhere over 100 people will be working there during this time. And we can only hope that they'll talk to each other and get things done. So to give you an update on that event, you may have heard that's happening next month. There's a number of things going on there, and in case you didn't know, that's the National Championship air racing that we're so glad, and are bringing so much attention and bring positive influence to our community. So a couple of things to note that have been accomplished. Power lines. We have buried all the power lines that requested for safety procedures. We have put up 33 marker balls, being brightly for each orange ball, moved that curb right on the airport. The home pylon, pad for the home pylon, it's in process of being put in place, that will be finished tomorrow. We also are still doing a lot of paperwork in relationship to the airport area, which I'll just more talk about later on. But I also thought, we've talked a lot about the construction, and if you see a construction truck in town, pretty much guaranteed it's at the airport for some reason. We've had parades of hot mix asphalt, five at a time coming on the airport, a lot that go on. But I'd love to talk a little bit beyond what the air racing is and the airshow component. So a couple of the key things happening in the airshow component, if you ever saw that series called Baba Black Sheep and those beautiful horsehair fighters in that aircraft with the gold wing, which they just call whistling net because it does make a unusual whistling sound when it flies. We will have one of those here doing aerobatics performance as part of our airshow component. And then to jump centuries ahead, we will also have a very stock general aviation Bonanza, Bonanza, very common general aviation aircraft, but he has full aerobatics in it. And it's interesting to watch because when he's upside down, the wind is slowly carrying out of his engine, so he has to pay attention to get that correct. And if he wants speed, we also have the jet-powered trucker. So the jet-powered truck is big and loud and noisy and shoots a lot of flame out the back and will race against the aircraft just making a resting. And then something that's always been hard for me to say because it just doesn't sound right, y'all know what glider is, right? Non-powered aircraft. Well, then, a gentleman I've known for a number of years who is truly a rocket scientist likes to tinker, so in his tinkering, he put two jet engines on the glider. And that will be, and he actually is a New Mexico resident, he'll be flying that glider, two aerobatics in that glider, but I gotta tell you, it's the most obnoxious noise you're gonna hear all day long. It's just, those two engines, they're not that big, but they just cut out this noise like you were not, but I believe. We're also looking at a number of military statics, we hope you'll enjoy those military statics, working on a flyby and one that we're very. Working on a flyby, and one that we're very hopeful on getting because of certainly recent events, is a V two flyover. But I can tell you, having done about fifty airshows now, that flyovers, you get promised to talk about them, you work through all the kinks and all the paperwork. But you don't really believe they're coming till you see them on the horizon, but things can happen at the last minute. Especially with ones that are still committed to the military and doing what they're designed to do, what their original missions are. But having a V two flyover would certainly be good, and we're hoping to have the V two complete by a V one. And then, if we just pull in a B fifty two, we'd have them all up there, so that'd be awesome. So I tried to again mention how terrific the city, other departments have been, the way they have stepped up is unbelievable. And I thought I couldn't be any more impressed until I thought of twelve hundred T post up in four hours. You talk about some tremendous work, I mean, that is just pretty impressive. But if the city continues to step up, the city departments continue to step in just some amazing things. Now, you have few of them go ahead, look at it. Couple of other things that happened at the airport.
Our computer decided to restart.
Oh, okay.
Give me just a second.
So since the computer restarts, I'm gonna show you some things. You may have read in the newspaper recently that the mayor and the city manager and myself went to truth to consequences and visited the spaceport there. We had a very successful meeting there. Learned a lot more about the spaceport, which of course is owned by the state of New Mexico. They're on eighteen thousand acres of state owned land, and they're doing a tremendous job down there, a lot of economic development going on. We did find out when they're, just in case any of you are interested, in waiting for that ninety minute space flight that they offer through Virgin Atlantic. For the low load prices, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you guys wanna sign up, we can help you with that. Although I do understand that getting ready to raise the price, you might want to get the discount price going in. A two-year backlog, the new man, a two-year backlog for that ninety minute flight. They also then, last week, came here to visit us, because we wanna make sure that we can take advantage of all that has to offer. Not only with the direct landings and some of the activity that they do, but we also believe that's a good stimulus for going forward with economic development. Of good R and D type companies that we've certainly welcomed to our community with all those good paying jobs that they do have. So we think that that would be awesome. So when we get this pulled up, I'll show you some pictures from there. Amazingly gorgeous hangar, a lot of glass. Now, that, that was built by the state, that's least to Virgin Atlantic, that's where they keep the mothership. Unfortunately, they're like taking pictures of the hangar, it's all proprietary stuff. We're very fortunate to get into it. And then they had some folks that used to work at Disney that designed the interiors and it looks like it. You know, it's not too common, kind of office interiors got some special effects, let's say, for that. Some other interesting things that happened recently. So there we are, that's the hangar I was talking about, and that's not a painting on that door, that's a reflection of what's behind us. They have a twelve thousand foot concrete runway, and yes, we told them, that's nice, ours is thirteen. We had to mention that to them, and there we are standing out on the runway, and some of those spaceport people there with us, it was very nice to have a chance to talk to them and learn more about the operation. That is some of the interior, the hangar is actually three floors inside, with, as I mentioned, some very special effects when you get your flight suit and all those kind of things. That make you think that that's six hundred and fifty thousand was well spent, I suppose. So that was the other activity we had this month, that is the Boeing triple seven. I know some of you got to tour that aircraft while it was here. They were here for a few weeks with several hundred people looking at that. The triple seven is a large aircraft, it's six hundred and sixty thousand pounds, holds almost four hundred people, and is configured for passengers. We've had very good meetings with Boeing before and after their tenure here. We're gonna be doing a lot more with them later in September. They're gonna bring in the seven three seven Max and do some other stuff. They also are planning to bring in a triple seven cartwheel aircraft, which is actually a shorter fuselage, but holds a lot more weight. It's gonna exceed over eight thousand pounds in what they call M toe, which is maximum takeoff weight. So what they do is they have this parade of water trucks for the first two thousand feet of the runway, put in water, and then they do brake testing. They feel that we're probably the only location where this type testing can, they can do this type of testing. And then they also have to, in the certification of that aircraft, they do have to check that box to get the aircraft certified. So it was a lot of activity this month, and I don't think next month's gonna be any quieter. So this evening, I'm happy to say I have two women with me. I have Mr. Fred Telling, Chairman and CEO of the Air Races, and then of course, Mr. Cucko will bring you up to date on some other projects that we're doing.
Mr. Telling, you're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council, I appreciate the brief opportunity. First of all, Bobby's covered many of the key things happening at the airport, and I just wanna say, I'm a second to none in my admiration for everything the city's been doing. And the extraordinary job that XL Energy has been doing, bury the power lines, make the marketing balls happen, and it's just amazing progress. We're, we're getting down, is it twenty six days now?
Twenty four.
I keep trying to hope it's longer, twenty four days now until race week starts. We're very excited, but literally we'll be coming down to the final things being done probably within days of the event happening. What I'd like to talk about tonight briefly though, is finally some very good news that we have. We'll have a press release out tomorrow, and we're announcing that as of today, you received from the Federal Aviation Administration all of the accreditation letters, both Ra Ra. To conduct the multi-class national championship air races. This accreditation is good for two years, it'll take us up to August thirty first of twenty seven, so it's approval for this year and for next. And we received accreditation letters for six of the seven classes. The obvious class that's missing is because we didn't have any of the unlimited aircraft to fly during PRS. They were expected to be returning prior to the event to complete their accreditation. So all six of the classes have been approved, Ra Ra's been approved, and they're all good through August thirty first of twenty twenty seven. This is exceptionally good news, and frankly, it's a testament to all of the support from the class presidents, the Pylon Racing School, the staff. And although frankly, a number of people here in the emergency services that supported PRS. And gave the FAA confidence that we'd be able to execute the event in September in the way that we have in the past. So I just wanted to advise the Council, the press release will be out tomorrow morning. And I thank you for everything you've been doing to bring this event here to a relaunch in September time. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, gentlemen.
We're about a city council meeting, you told us you might give us an idea of the ticket count, and I was curious if you have that.
Well, Mike is here, and he's had a number of about sixty thousand tickets sold at this point. I can either confirm or deny that number. My latest assessment may be a little bit less than that, but ticket sales have been going quite strong. We are in fact running into the housing problem, which, as I think I've mentioned, I always knew a concern for me would be convincing many of our core fans. That to look beyond Roswell and Artesia, both of which, given where the airport is, are almost equidistant. We go from hotels to the northern end of Roswell, or the sub northern end of Artesia can come up, so. But we're heading sometime getting to go to Fort Talis, Rios, Carlsbad, and other cities in the area. So we're seeing some effect of that. Back to the C's success, they've got almost two hundred RV spots with power and water. We expect all of those will be utilized. But I think it'll be a strong year, but you know, as I've mentioned before, this is a transition year. I think there's absolutely no doubt that every one of the participants is gonna learn and notice about. And I think the air races are exciting. I have to tell you, I'm most looking forward to the debrief meeting that we'll have about two weeks after it. To discuss everything we've learned and what we have to do better for next year. So it's really been exciting, but the fact of the matter is, I've never seen a state and city pull together so well. And you know, again, I've said it many times, like Matthews, you know, it's, it's a challenge for legislators to approve money, I recognize that. The city, but the reality is, all that money has to be managed by somebody, and he's the pointy end of the spear to make everything happen. He and his team have just been doing a fabulous job. Any other questions?
Councilor Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe for Buck. But I, and I think this has been a concern that we had since we started talking about the races, is hotel prices. Do, do we know whether they have been increased? If so, how much? Or do we, we have any idea how much is money, how much we're talking about?
We do. I am not in a position to give the Council a full and total accounting, but I can give you what I know at the moment, if you're interested.
Sure.
The fact of the matter is. And I'll start by saying, by way of background, as all of you who do know me, I'm an economist by training. You know, an economist are second only to auditors for having no humor. So the fact of the matter is, we knew entering into this, that while I'm a capitalist at heart, the prices were going to rise because demand was gonna be extraordinary. Quick history is, early on, when we announced the dates, within weeks, probably eighty percent of the capacity of the hotels and hotels here here were booked. They were booked actually, by and large, at the prevailing rates that most of them are having booked, spreading from anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty and I guess so. Back a few months ago, and it was aided by the efforts of the city, JAD, Hess, the mayor. We found that a number of the hotels actually were canceling under the rubric of having to refurbish many of those original reservations. Curiously enough, a few weeks later, as the renovations were almost gonna be done, they reopened with people of substantially higher rates. In fact, took the efforts of the mayor and JAD and Hess and Secretary Lansing Adams to intervene. The mayor wrote, I think it was pure letter, an articulate letter to the hotels expressing concern about the implications, both for our visitors and their impression of the city of Roswell. And Secretary Lansing Adams took it by himself to meet with a number of the hotel. But most importantly, in most cases, as you know, their franchise operations of larger parent company. And we reached out to the parent companies, and I'm pleased to say that in virtually all cases, the hotels in question, they were for it. Rolled back the prices and set things right. The fact, so that took care of the first ripoff that we had. The second is, yes, some hotels are making a room available to a modest five hundred dollars a night if you'd like. And I'm very impressed by a number of your hotels, but I've been at highest, they're less than five hundred dollars a night, I'm not sure they're quite booked. That having been said, there's clearly been a rise in prices. I'll share the good news and the bad news from my point of view. One, people entering into the contract, people coming here, if they know upfront what it is, they have a choice to say, I'll do it or I won't do it, any of them are booking. I worry about the taste that they leave in some of the visitors' feelings after they're here, but that'll all be managed, and the fact is, we know that one single event is not gonna generate significant growth in the hotel population in the near term. That having been said, the reality is, by and large, other than a few outliers, while they've risen, they've probably risen to double their standard rates, I would say on average, someplace between two eighty and three twenty. And that's not shocking to me. So it's supply and demand. Artesia is, I'm told, all but virtually booked, Mike Espirito may have more detail on that, he's been in close contact. But what we have seen is, we just haven't seen, we've seen some hotel impact in Carlsbad, Fort Talis, and Rios, but it's far less than we anticipated. So that's the rough overall picture. One of the things we're working on is to figure out how we negotiate rates for next year, which is why we're not announcing what the dates are going to be at this point until we rely on it. Because the biggest problem we're facing is, because all the hotels were booked, a number of our pilots actually were unable to get rooms here, which is having a negative effect on our ability to have as many planes here this year as we hoped. So it's a challenge, but we knew that challenge going into it, and we're working our best way to work through it. Thank you. My pleasure.
Can you really comment? The, it, it's, it's been going on pretty good, I just say it. You have to give a lot of kudos to our staff, they've really been working very, very hard.
Amazing.
And so it's, it's good, good to have you back, and it's good, good to have us going along very well.
This is my longest stint here, I'm here, other than a weekend that I took away from my daughter's thirty ninth birthday on Sunday. I'm here for my first full eight week stay in Roswell, and looking forward to every bit of it. I came back Tuesday night, and I'll be here all the way through the races, so. It's a great community, and I continue to be able to say that it's not a person I've met in this community I haven't enjoyed. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
And the, the sport class, they like gave a list of reasons why they weren't coming, but I think. Almost every item on their list has been accomplished.
Yeah.
The ones where they wanted, lines were too loud, were too low, they've been buried. And we have those red balls on every power line everywhere, we've changed a lot of things, and that was with a lot of help from local business XL on things. And, and city staff, I mean, there were a lot of people worked real hard to get all that done, and I think everything they reminded about is done, so.
I hate to overstay my welcome, but you know, let me provide just a little bit of replay of your indulgence. The, we knew at the end of the Pylon Racing School experience, that the supersports, these sports class largely have been raced on three different courses. You can race on the jet and limited course, that's their fastest. And the concern that they had was, if they were to lose an engine at the far apex of the course to the west, they could not reach back all the way to one seven three five. They were hoping they'll be putting in an emergency strip. The difficulty is where that strip would have to be is on the Holly Fields front of those ranch property, and they're not in a position to do it. As I think Jay would say, cattle don't like to graze on the cattle. So at the end of PRS, I already thought that we might lose the supersport for this year, but I expected the sport, the medallion sport to come. They did give us exceptionally long list, and you're exactly right. With the exception of that runway, virtually everything else on that list is being addressed. At the end of the day, when you read their note to us. I was at the Rotary Club today, had a great opportunity to talk to them and thank them for their volunteering. But in the course of explaining a lot of things that were going on, I said, in the final analysis, Bob Mills, who's the class president, and I'm a class president of one of the other classes, we've known each other for fifteen, eighteen years now. Basically said in his letter, Fred, I know you believe you're gonna get all this done, at the end of the day, I just don't have confidence that you'll do it. So as I said at the Rotary, in the end, Bob looked at me dead in the eye and said, Fred, I don't believe it. And as a class, we're gonna stand down and take a pause, we expect to be back in twenty six. And so, interestingly enough, I was the EA Gathering of Eagles, so big fundraiser that they do. One of the people that came over to the table, AOPA, was a sport pilot, and she apologized, she said, you know, what she, introduce yourself to him, she goes, I'm sorry, we're not gonna be able to race. I understand, you know, what the class wrote to you, but I understand, she'd already heard from the rumor mill, that most of the things we were concerned about have been fixed, and I said, yes, that's true. She goes, well, I wish there was a way we could change that and get it revoked, and I said, well, I do too, but I'm afraid that ship has sailed for this year. So it is what it is. The bigger problem that is affecting the unlimited class is the simple fact that because they, they didn't make arrangements, as I had the T six class, even though my group is basically gonna be housed in Artesia, because everything was used up here. You know, they're running into a major problem, they have no places to stay, they're working, they're looking at RV solutions, but as I mentioned before, I know representation in the unlimiteds can be a lot lighter. We're just trying to work through exactly where we're gonna end up, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, we're gonna go racing. So I started off my talk this morning. I said twenty six days, Bobby corrected me as usual, twenty four days, we're on to race. I think this is gonna be. I think this is going to be an exciting opportunity for Southeastern Mexico. All of our fans who've been with us in Reno that make it, I'm sure I'm going to get nothing but complaints about, why do we have this? Why don't we have that? Everybody wants it to be the way it was, I'm sorry, life isn't that way. But I'm hoping all our new fans, because we have a lot more attendance from Texas market throughout New Mexico, I'm hoping everybody else walks away and says, my golly, that was a hell of a day. So we're excited, we're here and we're going to make this happen no matter what. Sorry to take so long.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
One quick comment. In my mail box was a brand new copy of AOPA magazine.
Yeah, I saw it.
And that guy, it's got his picture in it. But I haven't had a chance to read the article yet, I just got my old kit down here. So we've got national coverage for this from, that's the second article in the AOPA magazine. Large membership, very large membership. And, you know, you're going to win some, you're going to lose some.
Well, exactly, and when I was at the gathering, it was actually Darren Pleasance, who I used to work with, the EAA board invited me to join their table. And the AOPA sent those reporters down to do the article and interviews during PRS. I thought the article would be out earlier, they actually said they wanted to time it, so it was fairly close to the event. And it did come out, and when you read it, I hope you agree with me, in balance, it's a great article. There's another sidebar piece about Roswell and all the things to do in Southeastern Mexico, which I think is going to make Secretary Adams happy. So it's getting a lot of attention. And the one thing, sorry for taking so long, is with AOPA, we're working on, they're helping us to manage the flying next year, number one. Number two, they have a very strong school program, and I've already been working with Jennifer Cole, talking to her about that in conjunction with our scholarship program. Because we are going to be releasing twenty, ten thousand dollar scholarships, fifteen of them for pilots, five of them in conjunction with the university for A and P. And working with Dr. Powell has just been a real pleasure. So this will be a great boost to the community and just our small way of helping people break into aviation.
I was always a photographer around, so I got a position with him to make sure he got the shots that he wanted and took care of everything I could.
Well, from the first day I met you, when you showed up in Reno, you know, to all this, you've been here throughout, participating in all of these events, and I thank you for all your support, personally and deeply appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Bud Couple. And I have a forty three, Adrianne Hill, I don't see she's up here, so we're going to have to have her one more time. So she won't be up next, then we'll be at forty four after Bud.
Good evening, Mayor Jennings and Roswell City Councilors. Recognizing the amount of time that we've had discussing critical issues tonight and some other things. And I can see Councilor Cortez smiling at him, so he knows what this means. I'm going to cut this short, I'm going to go through some things that I think are important, but we're not going to, we're not going to go through everything. The ADB lighting project continues with the contractor, usually here at the air center, two weeks each month. And the new electrical vault, which is to go to bid on August the nineteenth, bids will be opened two weeks after that date. This new vault is expected to be completed in the November, December timeframe, after about sixty day deal time. And this electrical vault will provide greater reliability to control the new lighting on all the runways. The MAP apron rehabilitation project is located at the rear of the airplane side of the terminal. Phase one of this project is completed with asphalt paving recap around the perimeter of the project. The major portion of it, phase two, will consist of concrete removal and relaying the concrete that is damaged there on the south side of the terminal. This will require another grant and will not be worked on until the grant is received next year in 2026. The taxiway charter project is to repair damage from heavy aircraft parked during COVID, the damage to asphalt paving. The bids are in hand, the grant application is in hand, and work is expected to start in October after the air races. This is a one point eight, the two point oh million dollar project, it's expected to be a forty five day project. The terminal improvement project consists primarily of the renovation of two restroom areas. The main restroom area is located immediately west of the stairway that extends to the second floor. This area has been demoed and construction for the new restrooms continues. In fact, they're putting two fours up there today. Hopefully this project is completed before the air races. When they started, they had plenty of time, as things happen, you don't have plenty of time. The new generator installation portion of this project will not be in process until after the air races. Also, the restroom area expansion and renovation just east of the luggage retrieval area will not be started until after the air races. The taxiway charter extension project is still scheduled to be completed by the end of August, that's this month. This is a fifty foot wide taxiway that would be used extensively during the air races in front of the grandstands as both a taxiway for racing aircraft and for some static display aircraft. This taxiway is designed as a non-movement area and will be under the control of the air races. The temporary grandstand construction project, I'm sure everybody's anxious about that, is still scheduled to be completed and ready for air race spectators prior to the air races. The flood, if any of you have been out to the terminal lately, the flood damage repairs to the terminal are approximately ninety five percent complete. This project has certainly improved the overall appeal of the terminal building with new sheet rock painting, a new floor coverage, replacing the old carpet that was destroyed in the flood. Don Fisher, our security expert at the airport, reports that Boeing outgreeting, while we showed that large aircraft that was here for about a month, I guess, went extremely well. Boeing is very desirous of continuing to use the RAC for testing of their aircraft, which she mentioned. Airport security is also set up and ready for implementation for the air races. This concludes my report and I stand for any questions.
Do you think you have any questions, Mr. Couple? Seeing none, thank you very much, thank you very much. But next we have, we go to I have a forty forty, obviously, chance for council to help.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I need to, I just need to move to the pasty town.
Yeah. What's next?
So we're planning, I'm hoping to send our staff member, Erin Wilder, who's our curator of collections and exhibitions, to Cherokee, North Carolina for a conference with the ATOM group. ATOM is the Association of Tribal Archives, Libraries, and Museums. And the purpose behind attending the conference, there's also a workshop involved, is to get further information on NAGPRA. And NAGPRA is a federal law that represents the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act. It originally passed in the nineteen nineties and was updated in 2024. And we have five years to comply. And what this means is, over the next five years, public institutions, including our own, any that receive federal funding, that we have to go through a process to consider repatriating our Native American artifacts to tribes. Doesn't mean that they will leave, but there's a possibility that some tribes may reclaim some of the items that we have. We have about eight hundred Native American objects in our collection, many of which are in Chicago for conservation at this time. So again, it's a five year process and we just want to make sure that we're compliant and we observe the law. And so that's the reason for sending Erin. Can I stand for any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have, out of state, Carol, for public participation, we, I'm sorry, the fire department. Did you bring your resume, please, going to go out?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Fulton, council members, Lieutenant Reddick is going to Hazmat School. Our Hazmat team, we were looking for one of our company officers to head that Hazmat team. One of our grant programs with the website, was required some additional training. And Lieutenant Reddick undertook that challenge and enrolled himself in this technical school. It's an incident command school for hazmat situations, it's a week long. And so he'll be doing that and coming back and sharing that training with the hazmat team, the PMA, or the technical hazmat team that we currently have now. Good opportunity to get some training, out of state training, one of the top training academies in the country. And so he'll be coming back to do, to share that with the rest of the party. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I believe we have any other travels, so then, public participation, we have Helen Forti signed up. Ms. Forti, you can step forward in the podium, please. Miss Mayor, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca, Helen Rebecca Forti, and I'm in Ward One. And I have a statement prepared, I really don't have any questions or any requests, but one at the very end. On June thirteenth, my five year old daughter was sexually assaulted by another participant while participating in the summer youth program under the supervision of Jim Burris in the Roswell Parks and Recreation Department. The employees failed to adequately supervise the participants in their care and created an environment so unsafe that it resulted in sexual assault. This neglect allowed a twelve year old young man to repeatedly sexual assault my five year old daughter. You may have heard whispering behind me. I caught him right handed, I went home, I called April Hunter, and I told her what my daughter had reported to me and what I'd seen. She said she'd go back in and she looked at the CCTV, she called me immediately and she was crying. My husband and I asked to see the video, Mr. Burris said maybe he could be there on Monday afternoon. He, my husband insisted that he meet us that night. At eight twenty PM on the thirteenth, my husband and I met Mr. Burris at his office. He pulled up the security video and there was my four year old daughter being sexually assaulted by a twelve year old boy the size of a grown man with the grown man's hands. The employees were as close to her as you and I are and they did not protect her. The boy knew it too, because you can see him look over his shoulder to see where those employees are. And he told the detective in the interview that he knew he could get away with it because the employees sat on their phone and every afternoon for two hours, they put him in that dark room with the video on and your employees sat and looked at their phone. By his own admission, Mr. Burris told me that that young man was pre-straits from programming because he'd been physically violent with somebody else. The city allowed him to come back. Mr. Burris's employees failed in their duties and a sexual assault occurred. They failed to fulfill their legal obligations as mandatory reporters. They failed to call Roswell Police Department and report a sexual assault of a minor in their care. They failed to review the twenty three hours of video that my daughter was in your care. They had failed to review the ninety hours of video that that boy was in your care. I requested through the IPRA twice and been denied. No one is looking at that video. The only good thing I can say is that the city spends money on a really good security system. You can see him in clear, crystal clear digital TV right there for you. He's bigger than me. The RPD has not, watch the video. Who is going to make sure that there are no additional girls who were assaulted? Who? The evidence is right there, it's right there and nobody's watched it. The police took forty nine days to interview that boy. And guess what? He confessed to a lot more than we expected. Somebody needs to review the video because there is now warrant on the DA's desk for their approval to arrest that boy, that's what he confessed to doing. Even though it was in the power of your employees to have looked at that. Ninety hours is a long time, it would have taken us, I would have left my office, twenty three years of youth service, I wouldn't have left my office until I knew that no one else's child had been touched. Someone should watch the video. And I am very angry at Mr. Burris and the Parks and Recreation Department employees, very angry. And I expect, if you guys go over your bases, man, mandatory reporting, I told them both. I reminded Mrs. Hunter that she was a mandatory reporter and so was I. And I reminded Mr. Burris, nobody called the police. I did, my husband and I took our five year old and then she was interviewed for an hour. That's all we got.
Sorry ma'am, sorry about that. Okay. Next, we had Paul Rodriguez, is he here?
Here. Hello. I have some concerns about myself, I've been labeled a pedophile from here to all over the state. I don't know where the attacks are coming from, someone needs to show me. Simple as that.
Can you give us your name and address you have to give back?
Paul Rodriguez, ten fifteen West Eighth Street, I, I, that name had to change to, I had to get a real ID and it changed to Paul Sinercocks. I, yeah, ten fifteen West Eighth. And I don't know what's going on, I can't rest tonight, I can't do anything, can't go anywhere. It feels like I, I couldn't do anything at all. So I need someone to bring me up to speed so I know where, what's going on. I, yeah, I just don't, I don't know where to look.
But I think maybe we'll get, whatever we'll have to get with the city attorney and legal department to advise you or I can't advise you, but they can get some idea about where we are in this case. I mean, I don't know if it's related or what.
No, there's really no case, it's just, there's people on Facebook saying some certain things, I can't get around it, I can't, I, I don't know where to go, do or say, I don't actually know anybody, so why do you have problems? So I, yeah, someone, even here, if anyone can show me what's going on, I would love to know. So I don't know how people are labeling me a pedophile, I don't know how they know in every city across here, I, I don't know what's going on. Someone has to tell me, anybody here?
If you'll get your, name, name and address to our clerk and your phone number, if you have a phone or whatever, if you get your address and information, everybody will try and find out what we can. I don't know about who puts what on. I don't know about who puts what on Facebook, but we can check with our police department and have them.
Yeah, I've been to the police department, the state police, City Hall, Sheriff's Department, and nobody's talking. I got no answers. I don't know where else to go or who to talk to. Everybody's lying. Nobody's telling me anything. So I, I don't know what to do.
All right, well, that's what, to get her your name and address and phone number, if you'll get that to our clerk.
Okay.
See if you can get that information and we can find out, we can find out for you. Okay. Now we have the next thing on public participation. We will go, the next, the next individuals were item 45 on the agenda. It's now item 52. If they would like to speak now, they can, I think, or you can wait until the, you want to wait for your item comes up. Because you're here for the item 52, which is now a zoning case for the retail cannabis session. That's case number 25-0063. And so we'll wait for that, if that's okay with everybody, for item 52. Or that, on zoning case 45, we will go to that in the next, that's next, I guess.
No.
No. Oh, we've got, I'm sorry, that's one, two, item nine now, which is item 45. If there's no other participation, we've seen, we'll go ahead. Next, we go to Counselor Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt one million, $239,791 and 95 cents for the macro-surfacing of the main spectator area of the national championship car races. I have to move.
Here we have motion by Counselor Corn and a second by Counselor Cavill. Is that you?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, item nine. Now, is this the, Madam Clerk, is this the correct number on the handout as to the of cost?
Ms. Bobby can speak to that.
Okay. So we have the motion by Counselor Corn and a, a motion by Counselor Corn. We have a second, pardon? Focus. Motion by Counselor Corn and a second by Counselor Cavill. Okay. So now we're on that, Counselor Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend the amount of one million, $239,791 and 95 cents to one million, $334,229.50.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Corn, second by Counselor Cavill to amend item nine to the, one million, $334,229.50. Is there any further discussion or, now, if it's Johnson?
Yes, I, the estimate's over 30 days. That's the first problem. It seems like we just got this estimate recently, right? So the estimate date should reflect the true date we got the estimate on, which still keep it under the 30 days.
Okay.
And then number two, of course, Ed, we saw this in finance, the tax rate's still twisted there a little bit, but that's the only problem I see.
Are you open?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor McCorn, uh, Helen.
I want to, I want to hear about Ms. Johnson, as I say, but I'm concerned because these estimates are dated the same day. And now we get an estimate that's $94,000 or more than what we approved in the Finance Committee and have a little difficulty, so we'd like an explanation, please.
Yes, I believe what happened on the date was they updated their estimate without updating the date. So what happened on this and why the increase had to do with rate damage, the damage the asphalt was already down with, what was explained was because there was so much moisture that came down and then we have the extreme heats that the soil actually steamed and a bunch of it had to be redone, which meant it had to be resealed. And that was the increase in cost, plus some additional area that was added to the spectator area.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm going to ask Counselor Johnson, because he's very hard in procurement of a state, would it not have been better to approve this and then come back with a additional PO? Then, or, because of, are we in our 30-day time period or are we out of it?
We're, we're kind of out of it right now.
We're out of it. Right.
We're out of our 30-day window, number one. Number two, we could have approved it and we could have modified it.
After the fact?
Yes.
But it's probably what should have happened or should have not?
But, right, it should have happened. And I thought we kind of discussed that in finance.
Yeah.
A little bit. And I noticed the demolition was modified. Thank you, by the way. There's a 30-day, and Tony, you can, it's got to be within 30 days. And you can call Desert West, it's just, they go on there, they, and I get these estimates all the time, I modify them all the time and they always send me the same dates. I go, look, I got to deal with procurement and this is a violation. Please adjust the date.
Yes, sir.
They adjust it, they ship it back.
Yeah.
Now we got supporting documents that keeps us out of modification.
Yes, sir.
And then the tax rate.
You take the tax.
Well, if we run that tax rate, then we go to pay the invoice. Now we're looking at another modification because of course, nobody's going to let us get by with paying a lower tax rate than what we're really obligated to pay.
What's the versus each taxes on your, it's on him, on us, if he quotes it with that?
Uh, he will, he will share the love, I'm sure. And then it'll be another modification, am I right, Tony?
So what do you think we need to do here?
I think we could pass it, but we need supporting.
No correction.
With an amended, I think that would be the best case because you really need to go forward with this sooner than later.
Yeah.
And this is really a phone call away from getting corrected.
Yes.
But please note, the dollar amount's going to change and I think we need to look at what the actual tax rate is, seven point?
Eight point.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight point, yes. Okay, we get this dollar amount here, multiply by that tax rate and I think we make a motion to approve that dollar amount with a modification of a new estimate to go forward. You have the tax rate. But we still have to come back and.
Well, you can do it without GRT.
Can we do it?
You can do it without GRT. You post do this.
Yeah, we could do it without GRT and then add the GRT right there. Yeah, absolutely.
You can pass it without GRT.
Yes.
And then the bill would reflect the GRT.
Whether it would come in.
Whenever it comes in, it would be another question. But we still have another Desert West too that I believe we didn't want, if you saw what. And I believe it's going to be the same scenario, Bobby, with the, the original invoice date is probably going to be in the new estimate and everything. Let's discuss this with words.
Well, if we do, there are two different, item 46 is the other.
Let's just deal with this one, right?
Let's just deal with this one and change, if we will change this according to the total plus the, what the app will approve this with the total amount plus the app.
Without GRT.
Without GRT.
Without GRT.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Counselor Corn, that number should be one million, $255,499.63.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, let's say that again so the clerk gets him out.
One million, $255,499.63. And I make that amendment to my, amendment.
Plus GRT.
One million, $255,499.63.
Plus GRT.
Plus GRT, yes.
I second.
Well, you can't, because he's already seconded the motion.
Oh.
So if that needs his approval, then he needs to second that.
Yeah. Cavill, are you okay with this?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and the date, we'll get the new date on the new, on the approved motion, on the.
Right. Date also needs to be updated.
So we'll correct the date, we'll have a new corrective date and a new corrective, a final amount plus GRT. Is there any further discussion on item nine? Okay. Seeing none, if the clerk can call the roll.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Orobesa?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Cavill?
Yes.
Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
Counselor Cortez?
Aye.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ma'am, so, having by vote, ten to confirm, none are negative, item 45, approving the purchase order to PO Desert West for one million, $255,499.63 plus GRT has been approved. Next, we will go to item 46, which is item 11 in your book, and that is.
67.
On page?
67.
Yeah, we're back on.
Well, 67.
Okay, this is item, this is an approval. Okay, for Counselor McCorn, if you can here to make a motion, this has the same GRT problem.
We've, we've had some problems, Mr. Mayor, but I'll move the item to approve field purchase amount of nine, $591,035.68. And I have an amendment to this.
And I have an amendment to this. Okay, but we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Corn. And a second by Counselor Maruho. Okay. So now we have a motion and a second. It appears to have the same problem as the last one, so we need to, the day and change work, change on the date and we need to have a total, the $591. Is that right? It's not. Okay.
Or maybe by amendment here, just a minute.
Okay.
604-270. 604-270.
Okay.
Okay, are you ready for an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that two things occur, the amount, we'll get that done, or $604,270 plus gross receipts. Ed, you checking the math center?
No, no, I don't need to.
I got it.
You're okay.
I did it on paper.
Well, when we get through the amendment, then we will vote, if there's no objection to the amendment, then we will keep the vote through.
And the date on the, as I mentioned earlier, and the date on the, well, we will do it if there's no objection. And the date on the estimate also can be changed.
Okay, so, and does the, Counselor Maruho, do you agree with the second that, in second, the amendment that Counselor Corn has placed on?
Yes.
Okay. So is there any further discussion? So now, on a vote by Counselor Corn, a second, and there was no objection to the amendment, plus, he will be changing the date, he will be changing the total to $604,270, dollars, plus the GRT.
Minus GRT.
This was minus GRT?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, the GRT is wrong, so we're going to go minus GRT.
Is GRT four?
Plus, plus GRT.
Plus the G, the applicable GRT for that amount. So we'll be eight, whatever it is. Counselor, the app, we'll do, just like we did the last one, with the applicable GRT rate for this.
Thank you.
So, and then she can get that looked up and then put it in the law.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
See, there's no, there's no objection to the amendment of the date, $604,270 plus the applicable GRT, it goes, will be added on to that. Seeing none, and we have a motion by Counselor Corn, second by Counselor Maruho, that we approve item number 11, the PO, PO for Desert West in the amount of $604,270 plus the applicable GRT with the new amended date. If, if the clerk can call the roll.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Orobesa?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Cavill?
Yes.
Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
And you, by vote, ten to confirm, none are negative, please.
Aye.
Counselor Cortez and Counselor Dixon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I make that sound?
No, it's all right. We'll go ahead and just keep through it. We'll, okay, so now, item number 46, item number 11, PO for Desert West, has been duly approved, $604,027 plus the applicable GRT as amended. Next, we go to item 47, which is item 26 in your book. Okay, this is item 26, which is now item 47, our dollar. Resolution 25-42 adopts a resolution, 25-42 for the certification correction, correctness of the fiscal inventory asset for the fiscal year 2025. And that would be Counselor McCorn for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution, 25-42, certification, strength, correctness of fiscal inventory. Mr. Mayor, this last minute stat is just wrong. I'm sorry. We're getting so much last minute stat, I don't even know what this last document is in front of me.
This is official, this is the official, we're not a mass.
Certification, correctness for the fiscal year 2025. Fiscal half way 2025? Fiscal year 25?
Twenty-four. Twenty-five, yes, sorry.
Twenty-five minutes forty-two.
Okay. Motion stands. Motion stands.
So we have a motion by Counselor Corn and a second by.
Second.
Second by Counselor Lady Halverson. Now, is this. Okay, so this is, the copy you have in your book is the same as this copy as well. Tell. Is that right, Tony?
Yes, I believe that it cut off some of the documentation in the PDF file, so. That's why the doubt is right there, but it's the same thing that was in the finance committee.
It was the same documents were in the finance committee. Would you care to, an amendment, say anything about?
Well, this is pursuant to, um, subsection A of section twenty-six dash twelve dash six dash ten of NMSA. So every year, the fiscal inventory has to be approved by the local governing body and it has to be presented to the state after your office approved. This is just a formality, um, and then housekeeping item that's done every fiscal year at the end of the year.
Are there any questions for remaining members of the council?
Uh, just real quick, so it was taken off the agenda because some of the, some of it was omitted and, uh.
Yes.
Okay. That was.
There, yes.
Okay, there was really no, thank you, just for clarification, thank you.
Okay. Seeing if any affirmative questions. If the clerk call roll.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Orobesa.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Cabin.
Yes.
Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Thank you, by a vote intended for me to none, negative. Item twenty, um, well, item, the old twenty-six, the new forty-seven, item resolution twenty-five dash forty-two. Adoption, has been adopted, certification forty, with the certification of the correctness of the fiscal inventory assets for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you very much, Tony, next we go to item thirty-six, which in our, uh, book, which is item, we're now on item forty-eight. And item thirty-six is the. Approval of the Roswell Spano Chamber of Commerce, Piñata Fitch Lodger Tax Funding Request in the amount of five thousand dollars for marketing. Uh, sanitation, sanitation, security as well as five thousand for sponsorship. So I, uh, so we have Counselor McCorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Spano, Spano Chamber of Commerce. Piñata Fast Lodger Tax Funding Request for about twenty thousand dollars. Is it?
It's ten thousand. Five thousand.
It says twenty thousand here, you want to amend it?
Right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and just a brief explanation, um, the action requested was pulled over from the finance committee. It should have been updated when we did the agenda, so what they were approved for in the finance committee was five thousand dollars for marketing, sanitation and security. As well as five thousand for sponsorship. So there, it was just a, they didn't get the actual request updated, so what they're requesting is the five thousand or the ten thousand for to mend on this.
I knew that, Mr. Mayor, now that was there, I knew it, but it said right here on this document, twenty thousand dollars.
That's what she.
Yeah, that.
We just learned why.
Yeah. That was, that was, I don't want to have to say anything. It does say that.
So, Counselor. Counselor Corn, are you looking for a second so then you can offer amendment?
Uh, whatever you want to do.
Well, I'll second that, so now you can move on and amend it.
Counselor Bell.
That'll get it on the table, correct?
All right, we got it, Counselor, we have a motion by Counselor Corn and, uh, saying by Counselor Hildebrand.
Amendment.
And Counselor Corn.
Mr. Mayor, I need, I want to oppose the man, the twenty thousand, ten thousand, which it was supposed to be.
Okay.
And I've had to finish some other facts that have been brought forth, so there may be a further amendment.
Okay, so we have, um, motion by Counselor Corn and taking the ten thousand dollars, twenty.
Is that amenable?
As long as we call it five thousand for marketing, because there's different qualifications, you gotta call it five thousand for marketing sanitation and five thousand sponsorship. If that's what your motion is, Counselor Corn.
Yeah.
Okay, then I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we're on discussion of that motion, Counselor Lady Halverson.
Is Mr. Maris still here?
He just left.
Suck you up.
Okay, um, it's my understanding, I'm the one that made the motion and the finance committee, the five thousand per each. It's my understanding that they got five thousand dollars from the state as well. So I would like to amend that we just remove the five thousand dollars for sponsorship, would you just give the five?
That five thousand dollars they receive from the state, that is only for their website only.
Oh, that's.
It's limited, it's, it's nothing to do.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask him.
Yeah, it's just for their website.
Okay.
And if they don't spend it.
They always spend it on their website.
Yeah, it's three of them.
They don't give it, but it's just for their website.
Okay, so is there any further discussion? Are there any further discussion on, the motion now is for five thousand dollars for marketing, sanitation and security and five thousand for sponsorship.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
This, this event is occurring the same day or the same weekend that the releases are in town, just for your thought.
Okay. Okay, so, see, there are no, no further comments? Okay, on a motion, I, uh, on a motion by Counselor Corn, second by Counselor Lady Hill, or Counselor Hildebrand. Uh, for approval of five thousand dollars for marketing, sanitation and security, as well as five thousand dollars for sponsorship. To the Roswell Spano Chamber of Commerce Lodger Tax Funding for their request, that was, was what was approved for those items, a total of ten thousand dollars. Expensed in those two, five thousand, that was, if the clerk can call roll.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
No.
Counselor Orobesa.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Cabin.
Yes.
Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Motion passes nine to one.
Okay, thank you, so, okay, that's item, um, item thirty-six, we'll do passes ten, ten to one. Next, we go to item forty-nine, which, uh, which, item thirty-seven, which is forty-nine in our list of operations, and that's, uh. The minutes of the May twenty-fifth. Meeting Counsel Lady Halverson's.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the special city council minutes from May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, we have a motion by Counsel Lady Halverson and a second by Counselor Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I disappointed that our new council is, might or is just that I went back to a book I was given. First, Kansas City Council. I pulled out a page here, just like to state it for the record. Board commissioner or other policymaking bodies should keep written minutes in this meeting list.
Can you speak into your microphone?
I can, yeah, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Board commissioner or other policymaking bodies should keep written minutes in all meetings. The minutes shall, we have a name, the date time, place of meeting, names of members and tenants, and those absent. Subsisting proposals considered in record, any decisions and votes stated shall each have been voted. All minutes are open to public inspection. Draft minutes shall be prepared within ten working days after meeting and shall be approved, amended or disapproved in the next meeting or accorded as preferred. Minutes shall not be official until approved by the policy making board. So. I'm a little concerned. Um, we don't seem to be meeting our obligations. And I'd like to encourage us to try to change that. Also note, I was present there, I was sitting there. And, uh, I also think that meeting was very important meeting. And I, I think the preparation and the facilities were inadequate. Oh, counselor.
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 Mr. Mayor, do you want me to go?
Good to see you, that's the stall of fireworks. Anyway, I, uh, I was present, associated with I'm for, so I was absent, was voluntarily absent, I was eight hours away, so I was there. And then, uh, so, yeah, I think that's my concern, something as important as that meeting, I think the public room setup, the audio, all those things were inadequate. But I hope we do better, I should, on that, and that's, uh, that's all I can say, thank you, I know how hard you guys are.
So we, we do struggle a little bit, places have meetings and, uh, and they're not, not every place is very well equipped, but. Because of flooding, I think we do have a problem having, having meetings, uh, and then having them with VAs and. Everything moving people around is, it is a hard time, a lot is caused by the floods, but you should be welcome to note that we should change them all. If you were at that meeting, we should correct that where you were asked to present, and that should be corrected and, uh. You will have to, uh, we'll have to work on recording, uh, all the votes that are in there. So, yes, we, I think, uh, we need a motion to change.
Mr. Mayor, I move to motion that we, um, change Chris Ford and Cortez's absence to present from the May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Counselor Lady Alverson and second by Counselor Arnold. Um, is there any objection? Okay, then seeing none, then we will correct your, your absence. And so we're now, we're back on approval of the minutes. Uh, and as amended, is there, is there any further questions? For remaining members of the council? Any further desires? They seeing none at the Republican call roll.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Orobesa.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Cabin.
Yes.
Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Okay, you see, the minutes for the special meeting on item number thirty-seven on our calendar, uh, has been duly approved. And noted with corrections noted and requirements noted. Next, we have amendments for the July tenth meeting, that is item thirty. Uh, babe.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes, the draft minutes from the May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
What do you know? Second. Thirty-eight, if we approve that, we're just.
Forty.
I'm sorry.
No, we put that in the second.
That was on consent.
Okay.
So we're on an hour on item thirty-nine.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the draft city council minutes from July tenth, twenty twenty-five.
No, I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Lady Halverson. And a second by Counselor Johnson.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to say again, because we now have Counselor Hinton here. For the record, all minutes.
Can you speak into your microphone?
I can't.
We're getting comments on Facebook, I mean, on YouTube, people can't hear.
Yeah, I got you, all minutes are open to public inspection, draft, and show, prepared within ten working days after meeting, it should be approved, amended or disapproved in the next meeting or accorded as preferred. Like us to be better than that.
Okay, then we'll be, we'll call after, do note that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now, can you further comment? Okay, on a motion by Counsel Lady. Yes.
Counselor Maruho was the one that was absent.
Is everybody down? On a motion by Counsel Lady Alverson, second by Counselor Johnson to approve the, uh. I don't know, on the, uh, minutes for the July tenth meeting, uh, on item thirty-nine. Now, this is item thirty-nine, item fifty on our level, thirty-nine in the book. So, we have a motion to, by Counsel Lady Alverson and a second by Counselor Johnson, uh, if the clerk can call roll.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Orobesa.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Cabin.
Yes.
Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
Mr. Counselor Maruho, you were absent.
Yeah, I was absent.
Good, so, you will not be showing the voting acts, and we have one more?
Counselor Cortez.
Aye.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Okay, by vote nine in the affirmative and one abstention, uh. The minutes of the July tenth meeting have been approved. Next, we have amendments for the item forty, the minutes of the July twenty-third meeting. Uh, and on that, Counselor Cortez and Cabin were absent. And, uh, so we can go right ahead with Counsel Lady Alverson.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the draft special city council minutes from July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion to approve the minutes by Counselor Alverson. Seconded by Counselor Maruho.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, this is. Is that okay? Okay, motion to approve those minutes, we're open to discussion, Counselor Cortez. Is that, is that all?
And I was not present.
So, Cortez was president.
I was not present.
Okay, Hildebrand was absent. Any further corrections on? Is there any objection to showing Counselor Cortez present and Counselor Hildebrand absent?
How do you make those?
Well, you're there because you did not participate in a roll call vote.
She answered, but she's so fast on here also.
Okay. Counsel. Were you there?
I was online, that's what it was, I was on, I think I was online.
Yeah, were you there?
Yes, I left that, everyone that.
Okay.
And so she was here. We have councillor Cortez was present. Councillor Hildebrand was absent. Councillor Cabin, is that, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, Adam Burke, you have those directions.
I'm not a vendor. I do want to say something to Mr. Chris, as I remember these are, these are late, these two, because they were never the last month, they were all, they were wrong. And so, they took them all out, so we didn't vote on them. That's why it seems like we're already the next month late, because they were, they were not adequate in our, in our book. And so, we moved them to approve them this, the next meeting, and that's why it seemed like it's so long. Not that they necessarily were not done, but they were not in our book correctly when we were trying to vote on them. And you said, I don't think I voted on them, and they're not in our book correctly. And so, we moved them to hold on this month, and that's why it seems like it's so long. If I'm not, if I'm not, if I'm correct, with the, with the minutes from those meetings, that we moved them because they were not in our, our three hundred and fifty-nine pages.
Mr. Moore, I, I think you're, I think you're correct. They were not in our book. My concern is that we're producing draft and starting with that ten days consistently. And that's required. That was really my concern. But you're correct, we did. They weren't present in our last, this presentation.
Okay, any further comments? So, we will, we will have, we will show the amendments. That councillor Moore was there on the phone. We had councillor Cortez was present. Councillor Cameron was absent, and councillor Hildebrand was absent. That's how the attendance will show. And so, now on a motion, we have a motion by councillor Lady Allison, second by councillor Maruho to approve the minutes of the July twenty-third meeting with those following corrections on attendance. If you're parking call roll.
Councillor Arnold.
Yes.
Councillor Moore.
Yes.
Councillor Corn.
Yes.
Councillor Oropesa.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor Maruho.
Yes.
Councillor Cortez.
Aye.
And councillor Halverson.
Yes.
By a vote of eight in the affirmative with two abstentions, the, the minutes of the July twenty-third meetings have been approved. Okay, so now that takes us after item fifty-one, we go back to our calendar. We're on item fifty-two. So, we go back to item fifty-two. This is in your book, it's item forty-five, and we have three people signed up to speak on that. We have Mr. Buras, Ms. Halverson, and Dwayne Baird to speak on item forty-five who have signed up.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself on this vote.
See councillor, councillor Allison would like to recuse herself from this vote. Is there any objection? Councillor Allison has been recused. Where should we go? We made a, made a reason for the excuse.
Why? I spoke to one of the people that was involved.
Yeah, there was a conflict presented under the ethics rules as required to conduct a quasi judicial hearing.
Well, just the rules provide that if you're going to be excused, there has to be a reason, and we needed to know the reason. That was missing. Okay. Okay, so now we're, okay, Mr. Mayor. Motion by councillor Johnson.
I would consider approval and conduct a public hearing on the retail cannabis zoning case, CAN dash two part dash zero zero six three.
Motion by councillor Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so we need to do a swear again.
Do we have to swear? Anybody who wants to produce testimony? But let's get a second for the motion received on this public hearing.
Second.
Does that count for councillor Cortez? Seconds on the public hearing. Is there any, yes, no objections? So, now, we can go ahead with the zoning case.
We need to do the swearing.
Anyone who is going to speak, you have to stand up and you have to be sworn in for if you're going to swear that people have, that you have.
You can.
Yes, councillor Lady. Are there four, about four people should be sworn in to talk.
Okay, can you guys please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty or perjury? Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a zoning case, CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three. This is a public hearing, city council public hearing on zoning case CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three for cannabis. A request for approval of a variance to distance for residential zoning districts, a zone change to CCAN, which is Supermarket Cannabis, and CP, a conditional use permit to operate an adult-use retail cannabis establishment located at thirty-one zero seven North Main Street, Suite B in the C two commercial, Community Commercial Zoning District. This is a staff photo of the property under consideration for the Greenhouse Roswell at thirty-one zero seven North Main Street, Unit B. This is a zoning map that shows the star is thirty-one zero seven North Main Street. You can see it's in a commercial corridor, in a commercially zoned corridor. The green arrow and the green line show an eighty-foot commercial property between the back boundary line, the east boundary line, and the residential zoning district to the east. So, there's a fifty-four point seven foot wide commercial property plus a twenty-five foot wide alley, approximately eighty feet between the property under consideration and Linda and Vista Estates residential subdivision to the east. The, oh, the little blue arrow is showing where Brian's Green Care was, and the city council approved that under zoning case twenty-two dash zero one two CAN, and that Brian's Green Care is permanently closed. As of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Division has received two written protests, both emails from the same property owner and zero inquiries for this case. Now, the protest letters are in your packet. The person who submitted the protest letters also spoke as the only opposition to the case during the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing on July first, July first, twenty twenty-five. Under Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-seven, Cannabis, Section twenty-seven dash six three, City Council, nothing in the zoning code, withstanding, the Roswell City Council shall have final authority regarding every proposed zone change and conditional use permit and any zoning request under this chapter, and shall hold a public hearing and approve or deny the same based upon the criteria provided for hearing. Section twenty-seven dash three two, Commission Review. Unless a cannabis project applicant is rejected, the Commission shall, and so this is talking about the Planning and Zoning Commission, shall consider whether to recommend a zoning request to City Council at its next regular meetings after issuance of the department's written opinion. The Commission may recommend a zoning request as presented or with conditions or amendments it deems appropriate. In the event that the Commission votes to recommend denying a zoning request, the motion to recommend denial shall state the reasons for such. On July first, twenty twenty-five, City Roswell Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on zoning case CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three. APNC Commissioner made a motion to recommend approval of the case. There was no second. The APNC Commissioner made a motion to recommend denial of the case based on the proximity to residential. APNC Commission voted four to one to recommend denial of zoning case CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three to City Council. Section twenty-seven dash three three, City Council Determination A. Upon recommendation or disapproval of a zoning request, the council shall hold a public hearing at its next regular meeting after the notice provisions of the section have been met in order to approve or to not, or to deny the zoning request. Section twenty-seven dash three three, City Council Determination D. At the public hearing, the council shall consider the recommendation of the department, the commission, testimony of the applicant, and any affected parties, and the comments of the public. Upon completion of the hearing, the council shall vote whether to approve or deny the zoning request. The council may set such reasonable conditions or amendments upon its approval as it may judge appropriate considering the circumstances. Section twenty-seven dash three three, City Council Determination Continued. The council's determination shall be based solely on the following criteria. One, whether the proposed location meets all of the time, place, and manner restrictions of this chapter and otherwise is not in violation of any city ordinance. Two, whether the applicant is eligible under state law to operate the cannabis establishment. Three, whether the particular location would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city. E, this council's decision to approve or deny a zoning request may be appealed to District Court within thirty days of the determination by any party agreed by the decision. Only the applicant or any property owner subject to notice here under may be deemed agreed under this subsection. This is an excerpt from the City of Roswell, twenty sixteen conference, a master plan future landing scenario that shows a property under consideration in the North Main Street The legal standard for zoning variance are as follows. An applicant must demonstrate an unnecessary hardship. The strict application of the distance requirement will require an extraordinary hardship due to unique circumstances. A variance is needed, necessary to overcome these difficulties. So, these are the criteria that you'll base your decision about the variance on. The conditions of approval for the zoning case CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three is contingent upon City Council approval and adoption of the intended variance, change of zone, and conditional use permit applications. To approve an indoor retail cannabis business, the Greenhouse Roswell at thirty-one zero seven North Main Street, Suite B in the City of Roswell, New Mexico, entered by the City Council. Zoning case CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three provides for the development and operation of a commercial cannabis establishment as the Greenhouse Roswell, located at thirty-one zero seven North Main Street, Suite B. The conditional use permit allows for the Greenhouse Roswell to operate as a recreational, adult-use, and medical cannabis retailer under a vice license or equivalent issued by the New Mexico Cannabis Control Division of the NMRLD. Except as provided for by this permit for uses above, the cultivation, processing, manufacture, and/or distribution of cannabis or cannabis-derived products beyond current activities by the Greenhouse Roswell is not permitted at this location. Any request to expand operations beyond that which is permitted under zoning case CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three, including the not limited to the above, will require an amendment to the approval of zoning case CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three. Hours of operation for the retail cannabis businesses, business shall be from ten AM to seven PM Monday through Saturday, and eleven AM to five PM on Sunday unless otherwise restricted by the State of New Mexico or the City of Roswell. The owner shall procure a City of Roswell cannabis operation permit and a state license prior to commencement of business activities. And based on the land use and zoning considerations, my effects of bad computer pollution of law regulations established in the zoning ordinance, City Ordinance, Chapter twenty-seven, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation, testimony material presented at the City Council on the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five public hearing, City Council has requested to hold a public hearing and vote on the zoning case CAN dash two five dash zero zero six three. Any questions?
Okay, we have any questions? Before we have questions, we would probably call the people who would like to speak.
The applicant is here.
Yep, let's see, let's take a look. Steve, you have? Mr. Baird, is that?
Mr. Baird.
Thank you.
I'm here, but Scott's the one supposed to do the presentation.
Okay.
That's all right.
That's all right. Is he sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And would you give us your name and address and where you're from?
Sure, my name is Scott Raymond. Two forty-two, Dave's Place, Tegosa Springs, Colorado. Good evening. I'm one of the owners of the greenhouse. We are requesting a variance from the three hundred foot distance for residential requirement for our proposed dispensary at thirty-one zero seven North Main. There are currently eleven dispensaries operating in Roswell. Of those eleven, seven have had to request a variance to be closer to residential than is in the ordinance. As the slides will show, I believe the city has set a precedent for approving these variances, and we have been looking for a suitable location in Roswell since we opened our first store in twenty twenty-two. The photos and measurements on these slides were taken from the City of Roswell zoning map with the program provided by ArcGIS. First slide is our green leaf, which is two hundred and twenty-five feet away from residential, and they were approved in June of twenty-two. Slide two is a Slide two is Oasis Cannabis. They are twenty feet from a residential zone. They were approved in May of two thousand and twenty-four. On the third slide, we have two-eight-five South Dispensary. It has residential on two sides, the northeast side being twenty feet, twenty-one and a half feet away from the location. Number five is Dreams Dispensary. They have bought a residential lot. They were approved in October of two thousand and twenty-two. And slide six here has Press Labs, which all those zones around them are residential. They were approved in August of two thousand and twenty-three. And there are two more, which is Nomad, which is thirty-six oh six Main Street. Not pictured, they have bought a residential lot as well. And Pago's Valley at three thirteen West Country Drive is approximately twenty feet from a residential lot. So Brian's Green Care approached us, which is now closed. They were a hundred and seventy-four feet away from a residential lot. And their variance was approved in the twenty-twenty-two. We were approached by them about taking over their location earlier this year. And we were pretty excited about that because it's been very difficult to find a location that was suitable. And we've been looking for several years. We ultimately decided, since we were going to have to apply for a variance, we were told we needed to renew their variance if we were to take that location over. Since we were applying for one either way, that the location across the street would be a better, a better fit for our company. And with Brian's closing, that location that previously wouldn't have been allowed because it was with a dispensary buffer. Sorry, my public speaking is not so great. So Brian's Green Care served the neighborhood for several years. And the location we're looking at is directly across the street, approximately a hundred feet from property line to property line. This is the location we're looking at. We're looking at the northwest, the northwest unit. There's a rear alley on this property with a fence separating it from the commercial, the commercial and the residential. So even by walking, you must go, you have to go all the way around to get to the residential area. The nearest alley by the residential zone is, if you were to walk it, that's approximately six hundred and fifty feet to get to the front door of the shop we're looking at. So, so the zoning in Roswell makes it nearly impossible to find a commercial lot that's three hundred feet from residential and also fifteen hundred feet from a, another dispensary, or I'm sorry, thirteen hundred and twenty feet away from another dispensary. So that's what, when they decided to close down, it kind of opened up that area as a possibility for us to look at. And knowing that we're going to need a variance on either one, we chose to look at this property across the street. And we hope you guys approve, approve us for a variance. Final slide, just a couple of pictures of our, some of our other stores. Our, these are actually two of our, two new stores we opened in Albuquerque the last few months. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Scott. Oh, do you have any, do I have any questions?
How many people will you employ?
The store should, sorry, the store will employ eight to twelve people.
Full-time?
Full-time, yes, sir. Yeah, everybody that'll be working at the store would be hired from, from Roswell.
Both people.
Yep, the, we have a regional manager that lives in Albuquerque. And yeah, everybody else that works at the store full-time would be, that would be the eight to twelve are people that are hired from the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
I just want to thank you for your diligence in choosing Roswell, and evidently it's, it's been a hard road to hope, but I really appreciate you being diligent about committing to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're excited to hopefully get started on an excellent project here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, now we have. Other people we have on the list to speak, Mr. Burris?
Mayor, councilors, Jim Burris, thirty-two oh five Chiquita Lane. Obviously, the dispensary is in my neighborhood. So I came here tonight to speak against approval of this. I'd like you to really consider the commission's vote, four to one to deny it. It's true, every time someone comes to town, we have to take a hard look at our zoning rules and then we don't follow them. So I'm asking for this variance to be denied. I don't really want him in my neighborhood. And if you look at the people that this ordinance is, the variance, the ordinance is supposed to protect, it's, it's old people and children. Well, there's plenty of children, but I'm a senior. I don't want it in the neighborhood. And I wish, you know, tonight, as we did, we talked about how we enforce our own rules and how we should stick to them and do what we said we're going to do. Well, here we are again wanting to ask for a variance of the rules that you guys have in place. So I'm going to speak against this. I hope you do deny it. I think we're saturated and I don't think we need any more, is in my opinion. Of course, this is in my neighborhood, and I believe I built the alley yesterday, day before, and I think that dent they're talking about is already burned to the ground. So, you know, we can talk about temporary borders on these things, but it doesn't mean that we're going to go back and audit them. You may tell me that there's a wall between something right now. Doesn't go mean it's standing tomorrow. So I'm asking you just to follow the rules that we have in place until you have the opportunity to go back and take a good look at our zoning requirements and your master plan that was referenced for the two thousand and sixteen, I believe this was common was made. So that's what I have to say. Any questions? Any stand questions?
Counsel, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Burris?
Thank you very much, Mr. Burris.
And next we have Ms. Howard, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, councilors. I'm here as a constituent. This planned area is in my neighborhood sort of. I live about Tucson Road. I have a prepared statement because I want to remind you, the PNC did deny this for good reason. So zoning variance is not a free pass meant for rare situations when a rule creates another reason of all right of Troy burden. That means the rule is truly unfair or impossible to follow, even when someone is trying their best. In this case, the cannabis shop has shown no proof of that. Just showing us slides that other cannabis shops are in a residential neighborhood does not show any unreasonable burden. I'm asking each of you personally to think about the families who live in this neighborhood. Our zoning laws were written to protect them. They're asking us to open near, near a residential neighborhood, but they haven't demonstrated that following the existing distance rules would cause them unusual hardship. The law says to protect the health, safety, and peace of our families, especially our kids, and to keep businesses that may cause traffic, odor, or other impacts away from where people live. And you saw by the map, it's residence, it's a nice neighborhood right behind them. The applicant can still meet the intended safety, health, or community protection goals by other reasonable means by finding a location that does not require a variance. We've already seen too many variances granted for cannabis shops in our community. Every time we approve one without strong evidence, we weaken the purpose of our zoning laws and open the door for more exceptions that chip away at our neighborhood's quality of life. I strongly urge this council to vote no on this variance. It's time to hold the line, follow the law as it is written, and protect the integrity of our community planning. Thank you.
There are any questions? Ms. Howard? Okay, that's the last, I believe that's the last person we have on the list to speak.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I still wanted to speak, if that's okay.
Oh, okay. Yes, come, that's fine.
Did you get sworn in?
You had, did you get sworn in?
I did.
Okay.
Sorry.
David, do this.
Yes. My name is Dwayne Baird. I'm with the one thirty-eight squirrel in Pagosa Springs, Colorado. I'm the operations director for The Greenhouse. I've worked for this company since two thousand and eighteen and helped it grow to what it is now. We've always held compliance, both with the state and with the local governing bodies in the very highest regards. We work hand in hand with local communities that we are a part of by employing local, contracting local, and sourcing materials locally. This location, as Mr. Raymond mentioned, will require eight to twelve employees, including budtenders, ship leads, assistant managers, and a store manager. All of these will be hired from, from your local area. The location we're proposing needs renovations. We're not a big company that has its own travel and construction crew. We'll need to hire local contractors, local painters, electricians, sign manufacturers, and so forth. We will be generating tax revenue for the local community as well. We're not a huge soulless corporation, but we do have five locations throughout New Mexico employing around forty people. So we do know what we're doing. We have a great reputation with each of the communities and locales that we're a part of, and I'm proud to say that we have never had a single black mark against us in any of our locations. We're from a small town with small-town values. We understand what makes communities click, and we look very much, we look very, excuse me, we very much look forward to being a part of the Roswell community and giving back to this community. That was my prepared statement. I wanted to rebut a little bit of some of the concerned members of the community as well. This is a commercial district. It's designed to be commercial, so it's designed to handle that traffic. The fence in the back, while I agree that fence can come down, it has been there for a long time. There is a clear separation all the way down the street between commercial and residential. And the business that we're actually replacing is a vape shop and a smoke shop that has moved. We are significantly higher regulated. We are held to, held to a much, much higher standard than vape or, or hemp outlets are. Our stores are community stores. We are very, very careful with who lives inside. We have inspections every couple of months to verify that we are staying with state regulations and staying with local regulations. So our security is top-notch. We don't attract a, we don't attract a lower-risk crowd. We try very hard, as you can see through pictures of our, our stores, to have a very nice store, welcoming to the population, but also make sure the children can't access it because this is just like alcohol. It's not for children. So with respect, thank you for your time, and we look forward to looking to do business with you.
Okay, do you, do you want to have any questions? Is Mr. Baird? Counsel, for more?
I've heard several times that you tried so hard to find a place. How hard have you tried? How many places have you filed applications for or so on and so forth? And since I've heard twice, that you haven't been able to find a good place.
So there wasn't, there wasn't a location that we had found that was even suitable to file an application for until now due to not only residential zoning requirements, but the dispensary buffer requirements. Since you have a rule that dispensaries have to be a quarter mile apart, all the locations that we had found that were available weren't even worth applying for because you're not going to grant a variance for residential and dispensary buffer, and you don't have a precedent for, for granting those variances as well. So this is the first location that we've, we've put an application for, but we do our due diligence before we put in an application. We don't just, we don't want to waste your time either and put in an application for every building that we think might be suitable.
So we vote no to this? Were you possibly interested in going to where Brian's was?
No, we, we, negotiations with the landlord broke down. I think Scott speak, because I'm already on.
He asked for double to wrap up the last person was paying, so that pretty much, you know, killed it for me, took that as marijuana tax. Oh, sorry. Sorry, yeah, he asked for double what he was charging for burden at that location. And, you know, I took that kind of as, you know, he wants a marijuana tax on his, on leasing his place back out now. And the place across the street is in better condition and has better access for a lower price. So we're not really interested in pursuing that location anymore. And it is, like I said, about a hundred feet, property line, property line from the two locations.
Yeah, I know. And my other concern, that's all my question was, I'm going to go ahead and say my other concern is that right now is because I felt, oh, you said, it's not for you, it's coming in general. I feel like I'm struggling, y'all know how I feel about this anyway. Y'all know what my goal is going to be anyway. But my concern is now this is up north in the nice town, now, now they want to follow the rules all of a sudden. Now they don't want to grant no more variances. Now, now, you know, but when it's all down south or on the east side, it's okay, go ahead, let it be, let the, let the makeup be next door to it. Let the kids be in the same parking lot because that's on the south side. That's, but now it's on the north side, now we need to follow the rules since we've been granting way, way too many variances and so on and so forth. I have a problem with that. And y'all can say what y'all want to say about it, but I have a problem with that. Now, do I agree? Yes, I agree. I totally agree that we made those rules, and I said how many times in the last three or four of these things, that we made those rules to begin with, and every single month or every other month, they come in with, can we get a variance? Can we get a canned variance? Can we get a variance? And so I'm not okay with it. Made those rules, we are going to stick to them or we need to let them go. Because I'm sick and tired of having these variance meetings because they're too close, they're too far, they're too, you know, whatever. And I disagree. There are so many empty places in Roswell that you cannot find a place if not back-to-back to hundred yards from a bunch of kids or a senior citizen home. I disagree with that. I've lived in Roswell my whole life. There are plenty of places you can find. You done that, you done your due diligence on that. I, I have to disagree with that part. But I think that if we're going to, if we made these rules, maybe we need to revisit the rules. Maybe we need to relook at them or something. Most of this, these council weren't here when these rules were made, so they may feel differently. I'm not going to agree to make those, let's strain it, that's for sure. But if, if, if we're going to make the rules, we need to stick to them. Stop changing them every time somebody else comes along and gives us a soft story. They can't find another building. It costs too much. It's too little, whatever, whatever. Stop changing the rules every other month because somebody else comes up with a different kind of notice or, or a problem. And like I said, you already know how I feel about this, so. But let's, let's, let's think about north side and south side. The rules should be the same. The rules should be exactly the same, just because I live in, because my, my, my neighborhood's not as nice as yours, and y'all go ahead and throw a ball on my street, on the front street. And, you know, and because the nice neighborhood is behind this building, now you don't want to be in this neighborhood. So I, I struggle with that a lot, and I know, y'all keep saying there's no difference in north and south, but we know all good and all well there is. And just from the comments made today, it just made it a little more clear that, that, that's true. Are you?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilwoman Allen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I actually have two, two questions. I happen to concur with Councilwoman Moore's statement. It was a little, because we, we've given variances for, as he said, seven, seven of these locations, and there's two things that kind of have stuck out to me is the, the comments just ever, you know, at every one of these hearings has been that, you know, the cannabis industry brings in, you know, a certain environment and have to be wary of that. And that was our first, I guess, back in two thousand and twenty-two when this kind of came into a front. We were kind of nervous about the crowds that would be hanging out at these establishments. And over time, I have not seen any, any disruptive behavior around these facilities. I have not seen anything but a very respectable, you know, preparatory business. So I did want to ask the deputy chief, Taylor, if he has, as, if the Roswell Police Department has noted any disruptive behavior that would indicate that these establishments are anything but respectable.
Mayor and council, thank you, ma'am. To be honest with you, I personally have not heard of any drastic issues going on with any of these establishments. I was advised, actually, today, I don't know where he went, but the chief advised me that on his way here, there was a fight in front of one in, on both unions. that on his way here, there was a fight in front of one in, on both unions. That's probably one of the closest and nearest that I've heard of any situation. If it was based off of that business, I can tell. But to be clear and honest, I personally have not been aware of any of these establishments bringing riffraff or, or illegal illicit actions. I hope I'm not standing out of, out of means here to say, to say what I want to say. I do agree with Ms. Moore, a hundred percent. I believe that the council set these zones for a purpose when this first started. And every single one of them that have come in has opened Pandora's box to allow the next one. Because the very first one that came in and asked for a zone exemption, it was granted. Why were those zones even set? That's my personal deal, and I'm sorry to interject my personal on, on your question. But we've alleviated every single time everybody, somebody comes in here. We have rules and regulations that we have to abide by, and we don't take case by case every single time and change them. There's rules, there's regulations, there's reasons for those. And the council has completely annihilated those every single time somebody comes in and asks for a change.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why we have, we have basic precedents that has been set, which leads to my next question towards Mr. Antima, and thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate your insight on that. Mr. Antima, considering that we have set serious precedent, precedent in very similar circumstances, just right across the street, we approved, there's a number on, we approved Oasis with a child mental health facility right next to it. So we have completely, in several instances, approved these. Now, my question for you, Mr. Antima, is I believe that the gentleman had, if we actually do not approve, the gentleman had the ability to appeal to, I believe Ms. Hildreth said, to District Court, which is a higher court. And considering that we go to a higher court and they would have their right to appeal, considering that we have set precedent in several, seven cases, that is something that I'm looking at. I completely agree. If we want to go in and we, you know, amend, amend what we created, what we approved in 2022, it makes sense. But to do that after doing seven and then getting up these gentlemen just because we've got a conscience, that's where I'm kind of going, okay, I agree, let's do it. Let's pull it up, let's run it through legal, let's fix that zoning. But at this point, we've had seven cases before where we've done it. So we're just going to, we're just going to stop now. And we, and that's kind of my point. I mean, it's a, it's a battle. I'm always up for reviewing and making things better by zoning, but timing is just off for that conscience.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Moore, the, I'm going to give you the lead, the law lawyer answer. The direct quote from Downtown Neighborhood Association for City of Albuquerque. "The exact show and necessary approval and necessary hardship varies from case to case, and the city council must make the initial determination by considering all of the relevant circumstances." So in the eyes of the court, each case is unique and distinguishable potentially.
Okay, thank you very much. I understand.
Thank you. Councilor Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little off tonight, so I apologize. When was the original act passed? Do you have to clarify?
Twenty-one, I think.
Twenty-one. So all but a couple of city councillors, most all of us, part here when this was passed, right? Second question. Is there any marijuana shops that's been open without variances? And? Four.
Those were three?
Four.
Four without variance?
They were all. Let me clarify this one. Because some of them were, they weren't needed, because they were already planted. They were very long ago. How many of those were very long ago? Okay. So three with two, one of those three was never opened.
I'm sorry?
The three were, so there's two ways that there could be a cannabis establishment without variance. One is they need the criteria where they grandfathered in, where the organs. There are four that don't need it. Three of those were through, three of those four that didn't need a variance. One never opened, two are open now, and what was built before the organs.
Okay, so how many have been opened with the variance?
Eight.
So this would be number nine with a variance. And four others, primarily because they're grandfathered in. Or didn't establish or whatever. So that number is really three that are established and have grandfathered in. Okay. So let me rephrase the question, councilor. So I have grandfathered. Means they were there, changed the rules, they could stick around. Has there been any open since this ordinance was enacted that didn't require variances? Any?
Two.
Two?
Two have opened without any variance.
Well, I'd to agree. We spent a lot of time on these, and we either need to go ahead and change the ordinance or keep spending all this time on these things on the administrative basis. The three to eight counting this one would indicate maybe, maybe it's a little overperceived. So that means we need to change the ordinance. In my opinion. I'm not a volunteer to take all that tax, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, well, your comedian helped you, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to saddle up on this one as the replayer. And we need, we need to get an handle on this. It's interesting to me, looking at the cannabis tax that we get from the sale of marijuana. It's flat. We got all these shops, they have the same revenue. Now, if they're reporting correctly and the states reporting correctly like they should, that that would indicate to me that we don't have any more demand for what's already here. So good luck. My basic business philosophy is let anybody open up, do what they want to do, and let the fittest survive. And so I'm, I'm contemplating, I don't want to vote on this thing because I'm just kind of tired and weary. Just tired and weary. Are you, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Hillburn.
Thanks, ma'am. Councilor Corn, I agree with you wholeheartedly that I believe this council had nothing to do with this ordinance. And this ordinance was written to be so restrictive against commerce, against business. You know, and they were real proud of themselves by saying, we really don't want it here. That's why the ordinance is written the way it's written, to move it to locations where the general public wouldn't go to. They passed an ordinance in this city that would restrict adult entertainment facilities. And they restricted them to cover industrial areas. Well, that's all done to restrict commerce. And I am a capitalist and believe in free enterprise. And we have seen this seven times, and it's passed seven times. Because this council has demonstrated that they're not in favor of the cannabis ordinances that we have. Otherwise, we would return them all down. So I agree with you, councillor. We need to rewrite this ordinance. And I'm willing to take this on, the legal committee, to reshape this ordinance because I am not going to be anti-business. And this is something, whether you like it or not, your personal preference. This was adjudicated by the state of New Mexico. If you don't want it, go talk to the state. They were the ones who said cannabis is legal. Now, I'm indifferent whether cannabis is legal or not. I'm not a user. Maybe I was when I was a college, but that's a long time ago. But I'm not a user. And it's your choice to be a user whether you want. But I do not recall, and I want to, that we've had any disturbances associated with any of these facilities. Not one have I heard of. Deputy chief said the same thing. He has not heard of any disturbance of any magnitude around any of these facilities. So I believe that this council needs to take the ordinance as it was, take a hard look at it. Because if you look at available commercial zones in this city, they're all in neighborhoods. They're all in neighborhoods. Then you wouldn't be able to establish it. Two? Is it two that we didn't have to pass a variance on? We only have two of these facilities. So I'm willing to take that on, councillor. That I think that this whole council should take that on. Because I believe that the previous council was just trying to be too restrictive and put their own personal, you don't put your own personal needs into being a city councillor. You have constituents that you have to listen to and answer to. It's not my personal belief. Because I voted on things that my personal belief would have been, vote no. But it's not in the betterment of the constituents in this city. So you have to remove your personal and look at it from the factual side of things, which is what we are charged with. This is not your personal beliefs. We are charged as a qualified judicial panel tonight to look at the facts. And so I will take this on as a legal committee item. And I would hope that the rest of the councillors, because there's five on each committee, that you would all participate. Because I do believe our whole zoning laws, and we're going to take a look at those. We're not going to wait for the new master plan. We're going to start taking, looking at all of our zoning. If you look at our zoning map, it's a hodgepodge. I don't know who drew that thing up, but it's all over the place. So I will tell you right now, we've done this seven times. I don't want to do it again. So we're going to take a shot at redoing our zoning laws. Are you?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second.
Councilwoman Allen.
Or Moore, excuse me.
I, Councilwoman Hillburn, I'm joking, I kind of disrespect you a little bit about it being personal. It wasn't necessarily personal. If we wanted to be a little stricter, because we, you know, we were, I don't know, pretend like I wasn't, because council, because of rules, that, that they gave us several things that we could, that we did have power over, time, the distance, and, I don't know. So those are the things that we, we strict on. The thing that we were allowed to, 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 we strict on. We know it's legal, we're not, we're not saying that, we're not stop trying. I don't think there, we were trying to stop anyone from being in business, so that's not true. We just said that was not necessarily complete. And it may be the way it seems, but that wasn't completely how it was. I'm going to stick up for myself because, because you know how I feel about. But I still, you know, we voted on times, we voted on things like that, and it wasn't personal. It was just those are the things, the three things that we were able to, you know, put in to, to change or tie in on. So and it was, like I said, it wasn't personal, and it wasn't legal. I could look and see how many places of business there were or any of those things. It was just, these are the things that we have a chance that we can, that we can limit. And so we, that's where we went with those three things that we could limit. So I put, I don't appreciate you saying that it was just personal for the whole council. And right there, so we really can't speak for the whole council. You can just assume what you thought the, the reasons were, that, that we did what we did. But like I said, I just think that the things that we can, that we could make it a little more difficult, of course, you, I mean, who needs fifty-two weed shops? Nobody does. You know, you've got fifty-two donut shops, that's the police. We don't, you know what I'm saying? We don't even have that many of those things on why. I saw you over there. And so I just need to just think about, there's, there's, there's still, and if we're, like he said, if we already had a weed lot, so it can't be that bad. All the people are still here, they're still coming. They're still, they ain't stopping none of them from coming to Roswell. They're still coming. So, and they know the rules for each place. And so I'm sure this is not the hardest place we've ever found to, to open up a weed shop. But I just think that's not what they need. That I think it wasn't, it wasn't personal, and we're all entitled to our own opinion. And since, unless you want to go back and listen to all those meetings and all the battles we've had back and forth, the fifty-two months it took those weeks and weeks and weeks to change and try to make it fit, you know, because it was brand-new to us when we started, it was brand-new. So, so some of the rules may seem a little tired, but it was brand-new, you know? And so that's why maybe it seemed a little tired, like I said, because we were, we started from scratch. And so now that, you know, some of the rules kind of working, and it's not the weed places that's causing the problems, people that's smoking. It ain't, it ain't the business itself. I'm sure I've seen a couple of police fight at the donut shop. So, you know, it, it, you know, it's not the place, so it's the people. I just have to still edit it. And so it's not personal about like where the place is. It's just, in Roswell, you know, weird. At that point, one is a better place, you know, different quality of life, and now things have changed. So that's why I said, I initially said, maybe we need to change the rules. And so, and I was there, we made the rules.
That's okay.
Now, I'm waiting for y'all to stop talking because if I was y'all was talking, why I was trying to talk? That's all. Are you, so y'all can finish y'all's conversation?
Mr. Mayor? Is the, is the distance measured from property line?
Councilwoman Cortez, may I? The distance, according to our chapter twenty-seven. Under section twenty-seven dash six-five, prohibited locations and activities within three hundred feet of any residential district, measured from exterior property line to exterior property line.
Eric, in your experience as our planner, how long have you been planning this?
Going on ten years.
How familiar are you with the zoning districts of the city of Roswell?
I'm very familiar with the zoning districts in the city of Roswell.
And what are your qualifications as a planner and zoning professional?
I have a master's in urban planning. I have twenty-five years of experience in planning, in different types of planning, over. I have 25 years of experience in planning, in different types of planning, over, over 11 years in just zoning administration.
Do you feel like you're qualified, based on your experience and based on your experience in Roswell, to give this council an opinion tonight? You can say no. As to whether or not, based off our zoning ordinance for cannabis, the configuration of our zoning versus our residential law lines, that our zoning ordinance has written creates undue hardship, placement, cannabis, facilities...
Councillor Cortez.
...or in the city.
Councillor Cortez, mayor, members of the council. Under my professional opinion, chapter 27, which regulates cannabis with a 300-foot distance from property line to property line, in our city that has commercial corridors above a residential, all up and down, is restrictive.
Does it create an unnecessary hardship?
I believe it does.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I don't remember the exact, the exact statute that allows us to go to a closed session, but if someone could help me with that, I would move that, we would go to a closed session and leave with council. But I don't know the word that's off top, cannabis not written down, I don't have to use this.
May I add something there? As the chapter 27 is also written, cannabis establishments are supposed to go in the C2 zoning district only. It did not provide provision for C4, which is along the West Second Street corridor. They are, it's restricted out of the C3, the central business district. So, yes, I feel that chapter 27 is very restrictive to cannabis establishments, given all those chapters. There have been variances to the C1, to the C4, and even in the C3 for establishment that was already there. That's a magical dispensary.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. Do you have that technology, councillor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councillor Cortez, I believe what you would like to do is move pursuant to the opening statute, a closed session, 10-15, under 10-15-1H.
So, we made a request under section 10-15-1A to go into closed session for this to offer the advice of council to the council members. Is there, we have a motion to do that, is there a second? Mr. Mayor? Yes. First limitation, which we're just limitations, you currently hold up 200 points to discuss.
You can deliberate the proceeding.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Kurt, Paul, roll.
Councillor Arnold, no. Councillor Moore?
No.
Councillor Corn?
Yes.
Councillor Orobesa?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yeah.
Councillor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Councillor Cabin?
Yes.
Councillor Maruzo?
No.
Councillor Cortez?
Aye.
Search for three.
Yes, sir.
Councillor...
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 Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor... Councillor...
I'm wondering why we were so quick. We have to pay our attorney by the hour and so we got out quick.
Spare money for the money in the house.
Yes, you want to give a service?
Yeah.
I just motion to move out of closed session and I'll attest on the record that only matters pursuant to 10-15-1H3 were discussed during the closed session.
And now, okay, councilman.
More say? Spare money for the motion pursuant to 10-15-1H, we to move out of closed session.
Second.
Motion in the second, councilman, or, uh, mister. Would you like to make your motion now or is taking an hour later?
If it's on record.
It's on the record, okay. So is there any objection coming back into open session?
We need to do a roll call. No.
It was saying, um, we're back in this session. Okay, now we're on item 45 in our food zoning case 25-0063 for Khan in its public hearing. Cannabis zoning, uh, cannabis zoning case. So having having been counseled, uh, I don't see any further discussion. Then we, the chair would entertain a motion of, um, a motion in case number 25-0063 on this public hearing case.
There was a motion in the second, was there?
Cortez.
We had a motion on from Johnson and Cortez, but then we need, coming back in, we have to have a motion to to either pass or to not pass it. And the motion, I don't think it said to do pass because the order from there weren't to consider approval or to not, because the motion from the planning and zoning was to not pass. So we have to have a motion either to, I guess, to accept planning and zoning report or we just have to have a motion to approve it or disapprove.
So that you would motion to approve the variance in the district? That would be a proper motion? Yeah, so.
Okay, the motion would either be to make, approve the variance, or if we didn't want to approve it, the motion would be do not approve the variance.
Yeah, as you know, Mayor, generally it sounded the affirmative. So I think the easiest word would be to motion to grant the case as presented. And if you vote, you're allowing the shop. And if you don't, if you vote no, you'd be voting against the shop.
Okay. Okay, so you rephrase your motion.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, consider approval of the variance and can, and consider variance and approval of the retail cannabis zoning case A-N-N-25-0063.
Can I?
Uh, if you just remove the considering part, because we are again a public hearing. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the retail cannabis zoning case A-N-N-25-0063.
Motion in the second by Council Lady Arnold. Check that.
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion by Council Johnson and second by Council Arnold. Any further discussion? Saying none. The clerk of call the roll. And, uh, Council Howerson is excused from this vote because she has, uh, she requested a conflict. Okay, clerk of call the roll.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Moore?
No.
Council Corn?
Yes.
Council Orobesa?
Yes.
Council Johnson?
Yes.
Council Hallibrand?
Aye.
Council Cabin?
Uh, yes.
Council Maruho?
No.
Council Cortez?
Aye.
Five hundred seven in the affirmative and two in the negative, uh, case number, zoning case number, uh, considering the waiver for case number 25-063 had already, uh, passed, uh, the council. Okay, so where we are next, we go to item, ordinance number, it's item 46 under, I think, item 53 tonight, ordinance number 25-04 to hold a public hearing to consider the proposed ordinance. 25-04 made, commended chapter seven regarding the food establishment itinerary vendors, Council of Temple Hill to ground.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we would behold a public hearing to consider proposed ordinance 25-04, which is amending chapter seven regarding mobile food establishments and itinerary vendors.
We have motion by Council Hillbrand and second by Council Lady Howerson.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, uh, Mayor Porte of Meritas, uh, it is approaching the ten o'clock hour and so, and this has been on the agenda for multiple months, so I'll be brief. Our itinerary and transient merchant code, chapter seven, was antiquated and was more appropriate for the 1930s or 40s and had numerous provisions that were flat out unconstitutional. What the city didn't have though was a, uh, any form of regulation for a more common type of vendor than itinerary of mobile food trucks. We've incorporated the New Mexico administrative code definitions into the city code now, which is a common practice. And we've created a permit for food trucks where they have to do certain things, most importantly, present themselves to the fire, uh, fire inspector for making sure, say, the propane isn't about to explode in the street. And then the other part that was important to sanitation or to the water department is to show evidence of proper disposal of fats. Um, we've had a number of reports with people just dumping stuff in the clogs. I mean, it's gross. In any event, um, there's a hundred dollar permit. This was in part placed there, but in response to comments by the, uh, brick and mortar people. So they pay thirty-five dollars a year. They're stuck there for obvious reasons. So a hundred dollars, but these, you know, just by the door in the city. Otherwise, it's, it's really about housekeeping and providing a reasonable, but somewhat, uh, but a reasonable method of keeping the vendors, uh, happy as well as well as them to get out, but ensure our streets are safe and clean. So I, unless there's any questions, I will get out of here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any, uh, any questions of any of the councillors on, uh, on this item or on itinerary, mobile food establishments? You've had quite a bit of discussion on this. Anyone have any questions? Comments in this public hearing? Okay, anybody in the audience want to say anything on that? Okay, all right, so now, okay, we're on item. I guess we close our public hearing. We need to have a vote. Uh, Council Hillbrand, do you care? You made a motion to.
All the public hearing now need to make a motion to.
To pass or deny?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We go back to the, uh, the subject again. Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we, uh, consider ordinance 25-04, amending chapter seven regarding mobile food establishments.
Second.
And itinerary.
And general vendors.
Okay. We have a motion by Council Hillbrand, second by Council Cabin. And now, um, questions from committee? Council Lady Howerson?
So, Mr. Mayor, I can, this takes effect in how many days?
Five days.
Okay, thank you.
Assuming it's passed.
Any further comments? Clerk of call the roll.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Moore?
She's left for the night.
Council Corn?
Yes.
Council Orobesa?
Yes.
Council Johnson?
Yes.
Council Hallibrand?
Aye.
Council Cabin?
Yes.
Council Maruho?
Yes.
Council Cortez?
Aye.
Council Howerson?
Yes.
By a vote of nine, affirmative, then, uh, nominated, we, we, we show that, uh, there's more has occurred. By a vote, this item 25-04 passes by a vote of nine, affirmative, nominated. Okay, next we go to item, uh, forty-seven in our, on our calendar. It's fifty-four on our field. This is to hold a public hearing on and vote on restaurant for a beer and wine, only liquor license on the premises for consumption on patio only, on premises consumption, only on a patio service for Joanne K. Baker doing back, doing business at Stellar Coffee Shop on 315 North Main in Rooffel. And, uh, this is to allow, behind, I guess, behind the Stellar Coffee Shop, they have a, uh, patio and that's where they would like to serve alcohol. Okay, council, uh.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Johnson?
Uh, yes, so this is a public hearing and you guys might recall that you, the council has to make an affirmative negative finding to deny. So this is kind of an opposite day. So, uh, for the sake of brevity, uh, Mr. Mayor, what we can do is ask if there's anybody here to speak against it. And if there's not, the council then has sufficient record to grant, because there's nothing negative on the record.
Is there anyone in the audience who care to speak for or against it?
Yes.
Just against.
Just against it, you only have to speak against it.
I need to correct you in what you said about what the ordinance, what we're, what we're hearing. It's not, may I do that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the way it is read and the way it should be.
You put your name and.
I'm, I'm Joanne Baker. I'm the owner of Stellar Coffee, also known as Ann Baker. I'm at 315 North Main. And thank you for considering this tonight. It is with premises consumption only with patio service. So it's not just on the patio. It is, uh, the entire lower level shop, not including the front porch, but the shop and the back and the back patio. And that's.
Okay. Do you want any coffee? It's too late. I won't be able to lose sleep tonight. Okay, now we have. Yeah, so we've had a public hearing now and we have no, there is no one speaking in opposition.
We never made a motion yet.
I know, so we'll do that now after we get out of the public hearing.
We never made a motion to hold a public hearing.
Yeah, we did.
No, because my niece on there, I didn't do it.
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, uh, there should be a motion to hold a public hearing and then the, you would ask if there's anybody secure to speak and when there's a negative, then you can hold the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we hold a public hearing and vote on restaurant A, beer and wine, only liquor license with non-premises consumption, only with patio service. Joanne K. Baker, DBA Stellar Coffee Company located at 315 North Main, Rooffel, expecting to.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here to speak against, uh, the, uh, allowing alcohol to be served as, as was described by us by Ms. Baker, uh, at the Stellar facility at 315 North Main?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Quick question. So I listened to what Council Howerson read off, but I also listened to Ms. Baker. You're talking about serving alcohol, beer and wine throughout the facility, not just on the patio.
And it says on premises consumption only with patio service.
Okay, with it, okay. I was just.
Just not on the front porch, everything else is, that's why I went with her definition.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak against it? Or, okay, okay, now we have, Council Lady Howerson, if you'll make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I relatively approve on a restaurant A, beer and wine, only liquor license with on premises consumption only with patio service for Joanne K. Baker, DBA Stellar Coffee Company located at 315 North Main Street, Roswell, Mexico, 8201.
Yes, and that will be as she, as Baker described it. Okay. Just to make sure, okay. Any further discussion? If the clerk of call the roll.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Corn?
Yes.
Council Orobesa?
Yes.
Council Johnson?
Yes.
Council Hallibrand?
Aye.
Council Cabin?
Yes.
Council Maruho?
Yes.
Council Cortez?
Aye.
Council Howerson?
Yes.
You know, it's not bad, you know, being the only one that doesn't drink coffee. I don't know why I have to go to a coffee shop to get a beer now. I have anything to go to coffee. All right, so now we have, I believe that completes our agenda. We have, um, real quick, uh, we have, uh, we have one gentleman that's been here all night, Mr. Daniel Seeder. The audience, would you like to speak real quick? Yes, I would. But a nod and I give your name, address, phone, and where you live.
My name's Daniel Seederberg. I live in 307 North Missouri, uh, in this rural district. I also, um, own and operate a bicycle and, um, outdoor store downtown right next to Stellar Coffee Co. And, um, hold on, hold on. So, um, I'm here to advocate for public, uh, pedestrian safety. Um, so being somebody that comes from a background of, uh, epilepsy, um, and finding a way to control that, um, I feel very blessed. Um, and, uh, not everybody's like that. And some people need to use cycling, walking, roller skating, however it means they need to get around. Um, and I used to, when I first moved to the city, uh, talk about Roswell in a very positive light as far as pedestrian safety. And since three of my, uh, personal friends and, um, have gotten hit by cars, um, well, and they just frequent my shop, honestly, is really what it is. I don't feel the same way anymore and it's, uh, just a little concerning. Uh, so just being a concerned citizen. Uh, but just to back that up, I would like to also say that I do see the efforts that you guys are doing to connect the trails. You guys connected Bird Sanctuary to Scale Grand and I would like to applaud you for that. You also put more markings down on, um, what is it? The east side, uh, main thoroughfare that you marked as a, uh, a bicycle pedestrian way. Um, so thank you for doing that, but I would just encourage you guys to keep the good work going on. Um, 'cause right now a lot of the cyclists and pedestrians don't feel comfortable, um, you know, on sidewalks, um, nor on the side of the road. Uh, 'cause first of all, if you're a cyclist, you can't be on the sidewalk. And if you go off the sidewalk and get hit by a car, you get it, you get it. Um, but especially down Second Street or any, you know, Main Street, people just get forced onto the sidewalk. Um, so just concerned citizen. And, uh, I hope you can understand where I'm coming from. And if you guys have any questions for me, I'd love to hear them.
Any questions? You know, I, I, we, I think we really need to get back into striking and striking bicycle lanes wherever we can. We do have a significant problem in Roswell because our streets are so narrow. And when you go try to go do anything down Main Street, uh, the traffic is so atrocious now anymore that, uh, it appears a lot of times you can't even get from college to get off of Level 12 Street to get across the street. You can't even do that because it's just wall-to-wall people, cars one right after the other. And we have to do that and we're gonna have to do, work on a, a new pedestrian safety plan. And that's probably gonna all have to be put together with something where we probably limit how many stoplights we have on, on Main Street. And, uh, second, we're gonna have to make some changes in that. Uh, we have very few wide streets that are wide enough to strike for two lane to the car and, and a bicycle lane on either side. It's pretty difficult. So we're gonna have to, we have significant things we have to, to address.
Okay. Um, I, I will point out that we do already have a pedestrian master plan. We've produced many of them and we've paid for all of them. And they have not been really taken advantage of to their fullness is what they could have been done. Um, especially with the flooding and the, uh, acquisition of hopefully more land for, uh, water dispersment. I think we have an opportunity to create a more, uh, sustainable and, um, I guess, uh, cohesive, um, trail system.
So originally we were going out one river and then going out the Honda River as well originally in the original plan when we put it together, but we have, we're gonna have to work on that.
All right, thank you.
You can talk to my brother about that if he wants to.
I already have.
Well, you can put in, put in a good word for me, would you? Mr. Call, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up?
I'll make it real quick. I know it's been a long night for us. Thank you, Mayor Jennings, members of the council. Uh, some good news. Uh, we've gotten, uh, a good update, uh, Tuesday, uh, on the police department. Uh, if you happen to go by there and tour the building, you're gonna notice that the new floors are in. They look beautiful. Uh, they did get a, a police administration, uh, did hire a contractor to finish out the drywall in the corridors. That looks very good. Uh, they're gonna use that same quarter, uh, same contractor to finish the drywall in the basement, the booking room. Uh, we also met with the architect, electrical engineer, structural engineer, and roads plumbing, uh, to come up with a holistic solution to their HVAC system, which will include, uh, electrical upgrades to bring it up to code since it will be a major, um, uh, improvement to the building. Uh, and so very proud of the police department administrative team, uh, for putting those items together and getting that done.
And John, I'm having on good authority that Mr. Taylor decided rather than wait for our food and eating board, then the police station is gonna move to accounting.
Talking about you jumping ship after you get your air conditioning unit fixed.
Heard their air conditioning unit works over here.
Yeah, nothing else does but that.